Okay, everybody. It looks like we're not going to be able to get over our hump as it relates to getting our streaming service up and running for this meeting, but we'll be sure to post the recorded meeting onto YouTube soon after. Thank you, everybody, for joining tonight. We appreciate you sticking with us through these very uncertain times as we all get acclimated to this new normal of being able to hold our meetings. We do have a healthy number of people here in the meeting this evening, which is fantastic, but I would ask that everybody, please keep yourselves on mute. There is a little background noise that we can't control, but it's definitely picked up by your mics. So if you could, please stay on mute until you are ready to speak. I have a flurry of things to read to get us kicked off, so I'm going to go through that first, and then we'll be going through our agenda. As a preliminary manner, this is Kevin Kelkut, Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris Weider? Chris, you are on mute?
Hold on.
There you go. Now try.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. C.C. Van Tine?
Here.
Thank you very much. Next staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Administrator Bryce Robinson?
Here.
Executive Assistant Judith Lozardi?
Here.
And Executive Assistant Nancy Langley?
Here.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, next. Good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless the participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment at the conclusion of each agenda item. For this meeting, the Norfolk Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom posted on the agenda identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body, which were provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and corresponding packet. Before we get into our agenda, permit me to cover a few ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the board will have an opportunity to ask their questions, and please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and also, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For public comments, after the members of the board have spoken on individual agenda items, we will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask anyone who would like to speak to utilize the raise hand function within the Zoom application. That can be found on the bottom toolbar on the participant icon. The chair will then call on those with their hands raised one by one for their question and comment. Thank you for enduring that with me. With that, a break from my voice. Bryce, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. I just want to start by saying, maybe I'm the only one, but missing the pledge of allegiance that we don't really get to do in a meeting like this. Just, it feels like something's missing, but regardless. The agenda items for tonight are COVID-19 updates, followed by public comment, after which the action items are to consider ratifying the appointment of the Public Works Director as recommended by the Town Administrator and to approve a contract for same. Next, to consider changing the premium cost share for retiree health insurance effective July 1, 2020, followed by consideration of the current status of the FY21 operating budget to recommend to the annual town meeting. To then, please consider authorizing a professional engineering services agreement for the Town Center Wastewater Master Plan Study. To please consider our request by the Cactus and Succulent Society of Massachusetts to hold their plant sale on the Town Hill on Saturday, September 12. To then consider proclaiming May 3 through 9 Children's Mental Health Week, and we have three discussion items. Those are to consider the status of the budget for the construction of the Holbrook Street Wellfield, to discuss a draft of the annual town meeting warrant, and to discuss expansion of the Medicum Emergency Communications Center. We have four warrants to approve and one set of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bryce. So that will take us into our first item this evening, that is the COVID-19 updates. Bryce, would you like to take us through the update that we posted earlier today?
Sure. We posted this afternoon that as of late yesterday afternoon, we received them from our public health nurse. There are a total of 14 cases in Norfolk. There are no new cases since the last publication last Thursday, and of those, more persons have recovered from their previous illness. You may have heard on the news today that the Governor has assigned an executive order to extend the closure of school through the rest of the school year, and all non-emergency childcare centers will also remain closed till the end of June. At this point, we expect later this week that the Governor will update his information regarding the current stay-at-home advisory. On a conference call with Lieutenant Governor today, she did indicate that they plan to make further announcements about later this week. At this point, I'm very grateful to report that we have no positive cases of any of our employees. All of our first responders are in good health and doing well, so we're very grateful for that. Through various means, we have, I would say, an adequate amount of personal protective equipment for our first responders and essential employees. And overall, just a shout out to all of our town staff who are, I think, compared to some communities, doing a great job of delivering services by various means and keeping everything as much business as usual as is possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bryce. I'd like to give the board the opportunity to ask any questions related to the COVID-19 updates at this time. Chris, anything that you have?
Nothing. Thank you.
C.C., anything on your end?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, our next item this evening is our public comment period. As a reminder, those who would like to speak have the opportunity to speak for three minutes on an item that falls within the purview of the Town Administrator or the Select Board. If you would like to speak, I would like to ask at this time that you please utilize the raise hand function that you can find by using the participant icon on the bottom toolbar. So I'll give it a couple of seconds here for anybody that would like to share for public comment this evening. We have our first individual, Mr. Centauri. Go right ahead, sir. If you could, just make sure you state your name and your address before you share your comments. I believe you're still on mute. If I could find your name, I'll unmute you for you. All right, so now you are unmuted, sir. Doesn't look like you're unmuted.
He's not, he's not speaking.
Yeah. Mr. Centauri, can you hear us there? It looks like his camera's frozen. You may be having some connection issues, so we'll give it another moment. Mr. Centauri, it looks like we're having some issues connecting with you. Can you hear us?
Sometimes if that happens, Kevin, you can leave the meeting and join back in, and it unfreezes it. Just FYI for people in the future. I've learned.
Thanks, Jen. Mr. Centauri, if you want to try to leave the meeting and come back in, we'll give it a minute while we look for other hands for our public comment period. Mr. Hadad, while we're waiting, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you.
If you could just share your name and your address before your comments, please?
Hadad, 138 Red Maple Run. It's actually just a question. In light of what came out about the schools today, is there information that will come through the Select Board meeting or would it be through the school committee meeting about what's going to happen within the schools? How would we get an update? Which venue is the best way to, is that information going to come from?
Bryce, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Kevin. I would suggest that the school committee is the best group to answer those questions. I know they've been working tirelessly on their learning plans and remote learning, and I think I saw the superintendent had joined this meeting. I don't know if she's prepared to speak about it, but I would, I can certainly reach out to her and pass information along, but I think they're best to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Thank you, Mr. Hadad. It looks like we have Mr. Centauri back. Are you there, sir?
I'm here.
Go right ahead. If you could just state your name and your address before your comments, please.
Tony Centauri, 118 Gray Birch Road. I had two questions. One of them was relating to, I believe, an email that Ed had sent to the committee showing the budget and the predicted revenue for the town. And I don't know whether or not the town has heard from the state or the feds about what they're going to do about shortfall in the town as far as revenue goes. That's the first question, because it looks like there could be as much as a $9 million shortfall. And my feeling was that, I hope this is not going to come out to be a surtax on the taxpayers. I don't know whether or not the state or the feds have said they're going to make you guys whole, and then you're going to be able to somehow or other pay back the federal government of the state over a couple of years or something. I don't know. The other thing was, the other question I had was about the town proceeding now doing business as usual. And I don't know whether or not you were taking steps to reduce costs. For instance, I mentioned the library. I think it's closed, but I don't know whether or not there are people inside the library who are quote "working." Same with janitors. The same with cleaners. Is there anybody else? And I don't know whether or not you've taken action to use the manpower effectively. If that was, if the people in the library, you know, idling, maybe they should be put someplace else in the town hall assisting in some other department. I don't know. Maybe you're already doing that. Anyway, those are my two comments.
Thank you, Mr. Centauri. And I'll just ask that Bryce, if we could put a pin in both of those questions for the budget agenda item that we have later on, sir, we'll address them when we have that form available to us. Thank you, sir. Our next one, it looks like Dr. Alardi. Go right ahead.
Hi, Kevin. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right, great. I just wanted to respond to the question that was asked earlier about the extended school closure. I would suggest or direct people for the short term to our website. We have published the district's remote learning plan, which covers the closure through May 4th and talks about all the services that we're providing to students and families. Additionally, it outlines the responsibilities of all of our hourly and our nonprofessional, as well as our professional staff members during the closure. We are expecting additional guidance from the Department of Education on Friday regarding how we can move forward and whether we are permitted to begin to provide new content instruction through the remote learning plan, and we will be making some adjustments to our platform based on the guidance that the department issues on Friday.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll give everybody one more second. If somebody else would like to participate in the public comment period, please use the raise hand function on the bottom toolbar under participants. All right, I'm not seeing anything else, so we're going to move on with our next agenda item this evening. To please consider ratifying the appointment of the Public Works Director as recommended by the Town Administrator and approve a contract for the same. Bryce, would you like to give us some background?
Yes, I would. So I moved forward since the decision was made a couple months ago to not move forward with the previous candidate and the advice from the board about how they'd like to see the department organized in the future. And I've had the opportunity to consider two very good candidates. Both are internal candidates. Mr. Barry LeRivier, who I think I've got his name right, finally, Barry, who's been the interim director, who took over the reins when Bob McGee retired in late December, as well as Blair Crane, who joined the town as the superintendent in September of 2019, and we've been working with since that time. Both of the candidates bring excellent skills to the town, and interestingly, their skill sets are, they're excellent, and they're different. They both have attributes that are very valuable to us, and so it really has been a tough decision. But at the end of the day, after interviews and working with both of them, my recommendation to the board is that Mr. Blair Crane be appointed as the Public Works Director going forward. And my reasons for that are generally that Blair has already been a Public Works Director, albeit in a smaller community west of here. He's had to do all, play all the roles that we're going to require. And as I learned recently, that job also entailed being in charge of the town's facilities in that community. Besides that, I think, especially as we have reduced the size of the workforce in public works and removed a management position from the department, I think it's incredibly important to have someone in the role who has the experience managing people and can exhibit the leadership skills that we need to take the town forward. So that is why I'm recommending him. And in order to facilitate the process, we have gone ahead and discussed a negotiated, a proposed agreement with him, which is also included in your packet. And I believe that the compensation level is well within what the board had given us as guidance of what you wanted to see. So if it's okay with the chair, I would like to start by asking Blair two questions, and then I'm sure the board will want to ask him some questions as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so the two questions I have is a typical first interview question. Blair, can you please give us some background about yourself? Tell us about your experiences that have led you to this role and why you think they're relevant to the job that we have here in Norfolk?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come in front of the board this evening. My name is Blair Crane. I'm the superintendent of Highways, Grounds, and Solid Waste here for the Norfolk DPW. Before starting my employment here with the town, as was stated earlier, I was director of Public Works for a small town in the Berkshires. Being in a small town, obviously, you have to wear many hats, which has afforded me not only experience in public works, but as a tree warden, a facilities manager, in emergency management, and even being the local harbor master. So there's certainly a wide range of skills that come with all of that. On top of that, in the town, I was also the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, as well as the chairman of the Complete Streets Funding Program for Mass DOT. So I do bring some experience to the table for sure.
Thank you. And the other question I had was, as you know, Blair, as we're moving forward into the FY21 budget, decision has been made to remove the funding for one of the management-level positions. And in order to further pare down the budget, we've also removed some of the summer employees that we had hoped to hire and some other aspects of the department. Please help us all understand how you foresee managing going forward with yourself and Barry in those, in the two roles of a director and assistant, and how you're going to be able to perhaps reorganize the department to get all of the work done and to move the department forward?
Well, I think first and foremost, you know, we're at a point where we, from a labor standpoint, in a spot where the DPW probably have never seen, surely, going back many years, I'm sure. With that being said, there is no shortage of regulations and tasks that need to be done on any given day. With myself and Barry both having different skill sets, I think it works out really well in this instance. We would have to certainly take a look at skill sets of not only myself and Barry and how they complement one another, but skill sets of foreman and assistant foreman that we have in the department already. And then once you've made that assessment, work through the process of assigning daily duties and tasks. I think it would be, since we would not have a superintendent, Barry and I would both have some daily duties, as well as some long-term plans and goals that we would have to take care of budgets, grants. There would be presentations, obviously, dealing with safety compliance, OSHA regulations that we have to deal with now. Certainly, CIP is part of that. So Barry and I work well together now, and I have no reason to believe that that relationship would not continue in the manner that it has already.
Thank you. So those are the questions that I had started with, and I, Kevin, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Bryce, and thank you, Blair, for the introduction and a few points to lead us into a couple of questions I'm sure the board might have. From my perspective, I was hoping that you could just kind of outline for us where your emphasis will begin in your first couple of weeks, should you be appointed to the role. Is there low-hanging fruit that you've identified? Are there high-impact items that you know can be addressed immediately? But it's like to hear about your game plan starting on day one.
Yes, I would say that on day one, you need to, being that we're in a spot, from an organizational standpoint, that we've never really been to before, I think that Barry and I would have to sit down to really start to look at the organization as a whole. Obviously, that we're in the spring and in an unprecedented time with the way that we're having to deal with the COVID-19. So that has certainly affected manpower and some of the tasks that we would normally do on a daily basis that either had to have been spread out or delayed at this point. So I think that the beginning is to sit down, essentially draw up an organizational plan, figure out what fits each of us best, which we've done to some degree already. I don't think that there's a huge change right out of the gate, but as we go forward here through the spring, it would, and COVID-19, whether or not that becomes less of a factor or more of a factor, is remains to be seen. But, you know, being in an uncertain time at this point in the juncture, I think that is a little bit of a flexibility that's needed going forward.
Very good. Thank you. Chris, do you have any questions for Blair?
Actually, no, I have actually never met Blair before, but I don't have any questions this time. I have a pretty good handle on how our DPW functions, so thank you. Glad to have him with us.
Thanks, Chris. C.C., any questions for Blair?
No, I don't have any questions.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, Blair. Appreciate the insight, the comments. And I'd like to throw it back to Bryce. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, not at this time. I think, hopefully, the board has everything it needs in its packet, and you're prepared to make a decision. So, and if you are, we would make this effective next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. All right, so one more run around the table without asking questions for Blair. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to comment or question on the motion as a whole to ratify recommendation and authorize contract?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'm somewhat confused and maybe I missed something, but I think when the board discussed this, the positions, the executive director and the superintendent, never did the board ever state that we were going to have a director and assistant director and eliminate the supervisor position. I think one of the things that this board has been particularly concerned about is the heavy layers of management in Norfolk. There's an assistant director for every director, and I never, ever agreed to removing the supervisor position and keeping an executive director and an assistant director. I assumed we would have a director, we would eliminate the assistant director, which would be probably a savings of $20,000, and have a supervisor. So that's the first comment. Second of all, I think, I don't know Blair, I think he's done a good job, but I think Barry LaValle has done an outstanding job. He did a fantastic job with the budgets, as we all saw this year. He did a fantastic job on our roads program. This year, if we do have money, Norfolk will be paving, I think it's five or six miles of roads. Barry has been instrumental in putting that together. And as much as him and Blair can work together, I can see some issues here, where we've taken away basically his stripes and lowered Barry down, even though he's done all this work. I think that's very unfortunate in this situation. I think Barry LaValle comes to us with an engineering degree. One of the things that we looked for when we posted this position two times was someone with an engineering degree. And though Blair has achievements in the Air Force, we did ask for a degree which Barry has, which Blair does not. Barry was under the tutelage of Bob McGee for two years. Barry has been here for less than a year. Barry has been in a town that has 12,000 residents. Blair's last position as supervisor of Highway in Chesapeake has roughly 3,500 individuals. Quite a smaller town, with a smaller operating budget for the Highway Department. I think the structure of a contract, I think one of the things in the last year we've talked about is why does everybody have to have a contract? The last individual who was going to be hired for this position, Mr. Temple, who still worked for the town of Chatham, does not have a contract. He is an employee of the town of Chatham without a contract. So why we're instilling a contract for three years, I don't understand. I thought this was one of the things as a board we discussed as to removing all these contracts. You know, they have just caused limitations to them. They just, they don't make sense. Also, I know Barry LaValle was doing this job at $115,000 a year. We're offering a contract at $118,000 a year. Without taking into consideration the pandemic, why are we offering more than we're paying the existing DPW interim director who's willing to continue to do that job at that rate? This contract also brings into account a vehicle. Today on the news, if any of you watched, they talked about the environmental police and the abuse that continues to be uncovered with overtime and vehicle abuse by the environmental police. I think they came up with $48,000 of abuse just on their initial audit. You know, I understand where a DPW director or supervisor would need a vehicle in the wintertime during snowstorms to get back to the DPW in the case of a storm, but I think the days of vehicles to directors in the town of Norfolk has got to end for commuting. We can't afford it, plain and simple. I think those are, those are my first inklings of concern on this matter.
Thank you, Chris. I know that we had previously discussed some parameters for the board in terms of what our expectations were and how to bridge the gaps in terms of what we had previously been searching for, what we had previously offered to another applicant, and what we were looking for going forward. I don't recall in any of those conversations specifying a position to be removed. I think the direction was that we had three leadership positions. We wanted it to be two leadership positions. If there was more specifics that you were looking for, I can completely understand that, and I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, but I don't think the direction- But I don't think the direction was as clear as these are the specific positions that we'd like to see at the top of this department moving forward. You know, I, I'll let Blythe speak to the other items there because she's the one that owns this process. So Blythe, if you want to take the opportunity to respond to a couple of Chris's concerns before we move on to CC.
Sure. So in no particular order, on the structure of the department, I, I would agree, we didn't discuss exactly what, but I think it's my responsibility to to figure out how we're going to be able to move forward within the parameters the board requested. And the board requested less management level positions. It's going to entail that both of the people in these positions take on aspects of a superintendent role that, you know, heretofore was done by, in, in the past, actually two superintendents, then down to one now, and then none in the future. So my conversations with both Barry and Blair are that each of them will, will take on some of those responsibilities. To the issue of degree requirements, yes, a, a associate's degree is part, is in the job description. But in any hiring case, especially in a situation where we have very limited pools, we do look at, you know, the whole picture and the experience level of a person as well. And I think that Blair brings that. I would just make one clarification. Barry does have a degree. It's not in engineering, it's in geography. Not to take away from his experience or his skills. I know, I don't mean that at all. I just wanted to clarify that. I would also say that I think, I understand the concern about contracts, but I think as we've learned through two searches, which both times yielded less than 20 candidates. In, in the second case, the number of the candidates were, were repeats from the first. This is a very difficult position to fill and there's a lot of competition for candidates. And I think it's important for the town to be able to offer a candidate it wants to attract and keep a little bit, a little layer of protection of a contract, which does have to be funded annually by town meeting. There is a clause in there for that. I think that's why it's important. I would also point out that when Mr. McGee was director, he wasn't responsible for coming in for storms. That was done by the superintendent and to some extent the assistant director. With less people now in, in the management structure for the department, this director will be responding and, and being in for snowstorms. It's a level of work the prior director did not have to do. And it's going to be responsible to be reporting to work, whether it's a snowstorm or whether it's last week's, you know, heavy rainstorm. It's a position that requires them to be on call 24/7. And, and across this organization, we have traditionally provided a vehicle for that, and I think it's quite appropriate here. In this case, Mr. Crane lives in Foxborough, 15 minutes away. So it will only be for business use. It's not to be used for personal use. And I don't foresee any reason why we will have an issue with that. If I've missed any of the points, I'd be happy to circle back around on those. Thanks.
Thanks, Blythe. Chris, was there anything that you wanted to add or contribute before I move on to CC?
Oh, not at this time.
Thank you. CC, did you have any comments or questions related to our candidate and the prospective contract?
Commuting? So a couple of comments. They're going to diverge in a few places from Chris and maybe not in others. Where they diverge, which I think is probably the most meaningful, is that I think that Mr. Crane is an excellent choice. I support this choice. I support the work that Blythe has done to secure this candidate. I understand that both candidates were outstanding. And between two outstanding candidates, I think it's my job as a member of the Board of Selectmen to support the town administrator and making the sometimes Hobson's choice between two excellent candidates. So as relates to the position itself, I think that the candidate who has been selected is an outstanding one and I fully support it. I do think that, sort of harkening back to the beginning of, of Chris's commentary about the idea that we were going to reduce the top heaviness of our town. I do recollect that when we were talking about that. I also would have to go back to the minutes to see whether or not we named what role we were going to abrogate. I don't know that it matters. I think that you can call the roles whatever you want to call them. You can say that someone is a supervisor and the other person's a director, or you can change it and say someone's an assistant director and someone else is a director. As long as there's not as many management roles in, in a small, albeit not as 3,500 person small. In a small town, we really have been, I think, unnecessarily top held heavy in leadership roles. And I do recollect that we were kind of all on the same page that one of the things that we wanted to accomplish was to reduce the number of layers. Whether or not that was abrogation of the assistant director role, I don't recollect. I do not care if, whatever they want to call themselves. But I do think to Chris's point, that if there's a difference in salary, that's something that may need to be talked about. But I think is, makes more sense to be spoken about a little down the road when we're talking about the budget. So my view on the number of people at the helm of this or any of the departments in town is that I'm less concerned about what they call themselves than I am about whether or not there's enough money, given the current pandemic, to pay them. And I think that that's a conversation best had in probably two action items from now. I, I do note that Blythe said that relative to the contract itself, I certainly understand people wanting contracts and I don't take issue with that per se. My eyes may be rolled a little bit and no, no judgment, Blythe. But, but we do, as a town, have a tendency to rubber stamp things once they get to town meeting floor. So saying that the town meeting has the opportunity to change a position every year doesn't necessarily have a lot of teeth to it. If we enter into this contract, I think it's safe to say that it will be for the three years of the contract. And again, while I, I think that, that the 3,000 isn't so much the issue for me as it is the vehicle. I think, again, my concern with the contract, the overarching concern that I have with the contract, again, hearkens back to my view that the budget itself has some issues. And maybe this isn't one. And maybe when we talk about the budget, this, this issue would be resolved. But I, I do want it to be on record where my concern would be with the contract. I don't have a concern with the existence of a contract. I understand people wanting a contract. I understand that other people don't want or need a contract and that one of the candidates that we actually ultimately ended up not going with doesn't have a contract in his current community. I'm not sure how relevant that is. The con, the candidate that we currently have wants a contract. I just think that there may be things in that contract that, specifically the vehicle, that right now, given everything that's going on, we at least need to take a second look at. And finally, relative to this observation that Bob McGee, who didn't have a contract, who didn't have the car, who didn't have to come in during snowstorms, but had all of these layers of support that Blair won't have, I also think isn't necessarily, you know, an apples to apples situation because, and perhaps someone can enlighten me. It's my recollection that we really only had these three layers, if you will, supervisor, assistant director, director for a relatively short period of time. In fact, it was my understanding that the reason that there had been an assistant director role established was because that person was going to step into Bob's shoes after he was shown the ropes. And so for most, if not, it wouldn't be all, but for most of Bob's time, there were not the three layers. It was the same as the, what we're contemplating here. And that's more observational than, than a question. But I, I think that it was maybe during Bob's tenure, understanding that he's been gone since December. During Bob's tenure, I think it was maybe a year that there were those three layers, certainly not more than two. So I fully support this candidate. I think that the contract is fine, albeit, Lord help me, I can't help but tweak anything, especially in light of what's coming up in a few action items. And I don't care what people are called, so long as there are less people at the helm and the budget can sustain them.
Thank you, CC. Blythe, would you like to address some of CC's questions and points?
Um, I, I, I think we're all set. The only clarification I would make was, I'm not sure that it's really relevant, is that Mr. McGee did have a contract. So just, just point of information.
Thank you very much, Blythe. Chris, anything that you'd like to?
Blythe, could you explain maybe, because I mean, we'll get into it, but I mean, I think you're aware of it. This, the supervisory position was at 87,000, I think roughly, and I think that's the position Blair held. I think Barry's position was at 100,000 and we gave him a bump up to 115,000 when he took over as interim director. So right there, there's the, the difference between a supervisor and an assistant director is $13,000, which if we kept the supervisor position, the director position, right there, we had $13,000 saved. But in light of the fact that Barry was willing to do the job at 115,000, why did we, and we had two viable candidates, two very good candidates. Why are we, why did we then jump it to 118? When Barry was willing to do it for 115, as far as I'm concerned, I, I understand. And I would imagine that Blair would probably be willing to do the first year for 115. Why are we raising it up to 118? And I guess from a contractual standpoint is we have the same nomenclature we have in every single contract that says you'll get the same increase as everybody else in town. Why don't we go to a performance-based contract and why don't we do a one-year contract? So that we're not stuck by the just cause for terminating someone and that someone starts to get reviewed based on their performance or their lack of performance. Not just you get what everybody else gets, everybody wins a trophy.
So I think if you look at the budget, the assistant director position is not in at 100,000. It's in at 92,000, which is what Barry's position was budgeted for during FY '20. So it's lower than perhaps you're suggesting. We didn't get to the point of negotiating a, find a contract with Barry, given my recommendation. But the reason that we went a little higher than 115 was simply that recognition that with a change in how we're organizing the department, the director has more responsibility than they had before and obligation to not only, to, to manage some of the divisions that used to be done by a superintendent, as well as being responsible for winter operations that the previous director did not. But this, overall, this contract is, is less, is lower than the previous director was making by, I think, $10,000. I don't disagree with you that the town should work towards performance measurements and make, and not just a COLA system. But that's going to take a lot more time and work to work through that with all the unions and, and all other employees. We're, we instituted, reinstituted performance evaluations this year. I think there was a one or two year hiatus that they didn't happen recently. So I'm on board with, with working in that direction and making that happen. And I would also note that for the assistant director, because there'll be no superintendent, that position is going to take on responsibility for some of the superintendent duties that were heretofore done by either Blair or previous superintendents. So I, I just think it's important to understand that by removing a position, more work is going to be required of, of the remaining two people. And I think there should be a little bit of recognition, recognition for that, which is why I proposed the salary that we have.
So if Barry's, was it 92? So Barry will be going back to 92 from 115,000?
Correct.
And are you saying that we cannot evaluate based on a performance base? We have to go with a colder base right now or can you?
We have to. I'm just, I'm just saying that that's a major change in how we handle that. And I think it's going to take a little more than a, a, a quick decision to change how we do the structure of that whole program. And if we're going to require it, then we need to negotiate that. And we, we don't have any open contracts right now. So I think the first step was making sure that we get people doing evaluations again and we start to build towards a change overall.
But you do have an open contract here. We haven't signed a contract yet, so you could.
Sorry, I'm referring to the, the Public Works Police, Fire and Clerical Union contracts.
But he's not a member of any of these, correct?
He will be evaluated just like anybody else will. But I think we need to have a whole program in place, not just single out a particular position.
Again, I, I've heard, I've heard from a lot of people in town and nothing against Blair, that, that Barry has done an outstanding job. I think you have one year this week in the town of Norfolk. Blair has been here for nine or 10 months. Barry's been here for two years plus. I've been here for 24 years. I've seen our DPW. I have pretty good knowledge of our DPW. And I, I think, I think it would be a real shame that we, we put Barry in a second chair seat after what he's taken us through the last couple of months and what he's capable of. And I really fear that we might lose an outstanding DPW director with this type of move. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. From my perspective, just to kind of round everything out, I wholly support Blair as Blythe's choice with the understanding that as town administrator, Blythe is the one ultimately responsible for the management of the town and oversight over each of the operating departments in town. I don't think that I'm necessarily in a position to evaluate what background or experience would necessarily make a fantastic DPW director. But in my short experience of hearing some of Blair's accolades, some of the ways that he's addressed issues that have come up, I, I do feel confident with him taking the helm and taking the lead in that department. I do want to note that I've worked very closely with Barry, back to, harkening back to my time first on the board. And I think Barry is fantastic as well. And I think them as a team really puts us in a great position to not only take the DPW department to the next level, but to also balance out some of those gaps that had been existing in the past. Technical information, GIS mapping, resources for residents and project management. So I look forward to the tandem and how they'll be able to take our department to the next level. And I fully support Blythe's recommendation for Blair to be in the director role. That being said, as it relates to the contract, I do believe that Blythe worked within the parameters that we laid out for her during our last discussion. I think that our message was pretty clear in that we were looking to reduce some of the leadership at the top of the chain on the org chart there. And I think that with this proposal, she's done that. We'll get into some of the, like CC had mentioned, some of the more budgetary aspects of that and how that fits into our future as we plan for some of the projected shortfalls as a result of COVID-19. But I do think, given the parameters that we identified to her, she did operate within those parameters. Now, I wholly understand the ideas about the, the car and, you know, the three-year contract. And I think those are great things for us to take into a planning sector and to deploy those strategically and to be able to make a program that we reference back to for all future hires from a certain point forward. I'm not sure if doing that at this point, as we have been without a DPW director for an extended period of time. And we have a department that is eagerly looking for some top-level leadership to set a roadmap for them. I, I would definitely entertain a conversation related to how we execute these types of contracts moving forward. But I'm not sure if I'm on board with delaying this process to be able to get that done. Because I don't know how long that would take. I don't know how many hoops we have to jump through. I don't know how many. I don't know how many unions we have to speak to. I don't know how large of a scale that conversation is before we'd be able to get this person into this role. So that's my hesitancy there. I don't necessarily disagree. I don't necessarily disagree with the car. But I don't think that we ever identified that that was something that we specifically wanted removed from this process. So I don't think my expectation was that Blythe would have necessarily have done that. That's where I stand at this point. Blythe, if there's anything that I said that was off-base or that I missed on, please feel free to correct me. No, okay. CC, I'll throw it back to you, since the conversation has circled a little bit since you last spoke. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
I propose very little. I do want to say that we may not have indicated a complete prescription from automobiles, but I do think that it's been pretty much a front-of-or-top-of-mind conversation relative to each of the hires that we've had to address, which isn't that many, including this one. And I appreciate that the, in this particular instance, the current question isn't going that far, Foxborough and back. And before, it may have seemed that our concern was more the mileage. But I, but it's not just the mileage. And I do appreciate that maybe this is a situation where we need to just accept that we're going to address it moving forward. Perhaps I should be more clear that I can't imagine that there are very many situations where someone actually needs their boss, their, the company that they work for, to pay for their car. It's a nice perk. It is a perk. It's a perk with it, right? That's what it is. It's in addition to your pay, you're getting a perk with it. And, and that's fine. But to say that we didn't say anything at all, there have been rumblings. I think that at the end of the day, if we vote to uphold this contract, the conversation that we have around the budget, it's going to come from somewhere else, right? And that's fine. That just is what it is. And so that's my only observation. We have been, there's been rumblings, ruminations about not spending so much on transport. Like everybody, it seems like, it may not be the case, but it seems like every department in this teeny-tiny town with one traffic light has a company car and a fleet of vehicles for all sorts of different departments in town. And those cost money. And then lo and behold, then the car needs to get traded in on a new car. So then the assistant or the deputy or whoever gets that car, and someone else gets another car. And it, and it goes on and on and on. So we may not have made that prescription. I'm just saying, for now, for me, let's mark this as going forward for any other contract. I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to see in advance, maybe we have advanced meetings or however we handle that, I don't know, a reason why a particular individual needs a car, because there are phantom costs that you don't see right away. It's not just a few extra thousand dollars. And this has nothing to do with Blair, right? It's just sort of you opined about, we never said no car. So I'm just kind of going on record going forward about no car unless everybody's on board or it's just something that typically you have a car. Fire chief has a car, because at 2:00 in the morning, if there's a 3 alarm, and he's got to get out of bed and drive to it. And maybe this is the same situation. But going forward, I think that there should just be more communication about things like cars, because they have the costs of breaking down, wearing out, et cetera. It's not just a few extra thousand dollars in, in somebody's pay package. So I am just going on record as saying that however we do that going forward, I don't know. We, we get everybody on board for adding cars into people's contracts, which has nothing to do with Blair, where Blair is sitting there like, what? Why am I involved in this? But that's just what, welcome to Zoom. But, but there it is. I just wanted, since we haven't been clear till now, going forward, I, a moratorium on cars unless and until there's a meeting of the mind on the automobile.
I think that's absolutely fair. Chris, anything that you'd like to add?
I think I've said enough.
Very well. So that all being said, I would like to, well, first, let me talk to the board about this. We have a singular motion listed here that ratifies the recommendation of the candidate and then also authorizes the contract for the position proposed. Would the board like to split those into two separate motions? Chris?
You can do it either way.
CC?
So I understand that Chris is saying we could do it either way, because it's going to be a no for Chris either way. And I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but if it were me, that would be what I would say. For me, I don't, I feel somewhat bad. This is a situation where it feels a little bit like we are, there's a word, I can't think of it, but we're sneaking up on Blair and surprising him. The word will come to me three-quarters of the way through the meeting. He will have already gotten off the phone. And then I will ask someone for his email, so I can email the word to him. It's a really good word, I just can't think of it. But ambush, feels like we're ambushing him. But by, but by the same token, it is my sense that if we enter into a contract, I'm fine, for whoever's viewing this at home, I think 118 is a fine salary. I think that having a supervisor at 92 versus 87, that's a different conversation. It's not in the contract. It has nothing to do with Blair, how much we pay the supervisor. That's a budget issue. The car is or isn't an issue. If we vote them separately, will, I don't even want to ask this question. It's more hypothetical, because I certainly don't want to put Blair on the spot. We've already ambushed him enough. We've been an incredibly unpleasant half an hour for him. Luckily, he's used to unpleasantness, because he deals with DPW. So this is just, this is just trial by fire. It would be my preference to bifurcate so that, because I really am mindful of the fact that we have other financial issues in play. If we don't bifurcate, just to put all my cards on the table, I'm still voting yes. But the money that I may feel that from the car is coming from somewhere else in the budget in two, in two times from now, whatever, two action items from now, because we don't have any money.
Very good. That being said, I'm sorry, was that somebody who wanted to speak?
Could I weigh in on this?
Yes, Blythe, go right ahead.
I don't have the list in front of me, but the employees that have take-home vehicles are ones that all have a similar thread to them, which is they are responsible to be on-call 24/7, whether it's a fire, it's a police emergency, it's a snowstorm, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a something else, to respond immediately. There, the police chief, the fire chief, the deputy police chief, I think, this position. The assistant director has had, DPW's had a car to take home. These are existing vehicles, and the out-of-pocket cost for the town is the fuel to go from where they live to town. I just feel it's really important that we not take away something when we expect somebody to be on-call 24/7, 365 days a year. And I'd be happy to get the board a list, you know, the next day of what people have them and what their position is. Other vehicles that we have, I think we've already given the board a list, are positions where they come to work and they drive a vehicle during their job, whether they're driving, a custodian driving from, from building to building to do cleaning or to go do inspections. They don't take those vehicles home. They live in our back parking lot here. I think the only other position that comes to mind that takes a vehicle home is the building official, who again, can be called out 24/7, as happened last week when we had a fire at a home and it needed to be inspected in the very early hours of the morning. So I certainly appreciate it, and I think we ought to look at it going forward. But this is an absolutely essential position to respond whenever. And I think it's, it's critical that they be able to have a vehicle to get to wherever they need to get to, perhaps with equipment, when something comes up.
Can I chime in just for a second?
Go right ahead.
I think that, I certainly understand, as I indicated a few moments ago, that certain roles, not all, certain roles require a vehicle, including this role, arguably, although you could do it in a personal vehicle. But then you would want some level of compensation, and you would negotiate for what that level of compensation is. But I think it is incredibly disingenuous to suggest that the cost of the town is only the gas to go from point A to point B. Because if that were the case, we would just give them mileage or a gas card to go from point A to point B. The cost is increased from that, because there is the purchase of the vehicle or using a current vehicle that we have in the fleet, and then maintenance on the vehicle, keeping the vehicle on the road, and replacement of the vehicle. So to suggest, and again, I don't mean for it to turn into a World War III over a car, but I just want everyone to understand that this isn't just gas between Foxborough and Norfolk, because gas between Foxborough and Norfolk all day long, figure out a number. Is it 50 bucks a week? It's not even. It's an incredibly small amount. It's part of my run. It's, it's, it's more than that. So in a perfect world, we'd bifurcate. If we're not going to, I still support the contract as written. It will just come from somewhere else. I'll need to figure out what that cost is. It'll come from somewhere else.
Thank you, CC. It looks like we're getting some feedback from somebody who's off of mutes. If you could, please remember to keep yourself on mute unless you are speaking. Blythe, anything to add on top of that before we make a motion? No, okay. That all being said, I move that the board ratify the recommendation of the town administrator to appoint Blair Crane to the position of DPW director and authorize a contract for the position as proposed. Do I hear any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, we'll be doing a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye. Christopher Weider?
Yay.
CC Van Tine?
Aye.
The motion passes. Blair, congratulations once again, sir. We look forward to seeing everything that you can do with the department.
Thank you very much, Kevin, Chris, and CC. I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will bring us to our next agenda item this evening. That is to please consider changing the premium cost share for retiree health insurance effective on July 1, 2020. Blythe, would you mind giving us some background?
Sure. Earlier in the budget season, we identified that the town covers retirees for health insurance. At, the town pays 65% of that premium, and the retiree pays 35%. We did some, did some background work, talked with town council about this, and identified that the town has never accepted the section of the law that allows us to pay more than 35%. And so town council felt that it was within the board's purview to, if it chose to make a decision to change that percentage from 35% to something different. We brought that forward to the board earlier this season and identified what a change to 50% would look like. And the board expressed some concerns about, you know, that impact on people who've previously retired. And also talked about what it would mean if people who had not retired, the percentage was changed for them at some point in the future. So what we've put in your packet is a different spreadsheet, which identifies what the different, what different options there are. If you wanted to change from 35% to, say, a smaller change of 5% to 40, or 45, or rethink 50, you have all of those in your packet. And just as a quick reminder, of the 137 people who are, receive health insurance as retirees today, the bulk of them are on our Medigap or Medicare Supplement Plans, and they pay $113.80 per month for that plan. And we've scripted a motion if the board wanted to consider a change of 5% for people who've already retired. The total increase for those folks would be a little over $16 a month or $195 a year. And then you can see what the impact would be if you went to 40% or 50%. And so the motion we've scripted would change that amount starting July 1 for retirees, a 5% change, and then would also change the percentage paid by future retirees, people who have not retired until July 1, from 35% to 50. I'd also point out that if you found this change acceptable and wanted to go forward, it would have the effect of being able to lower the FY '21 budget by about $40,000, and it would lower the town's overall impact of our OPEB obligation in future years, according to our actuaries, approximately $1.8 million. So that's the background I wanted to provide. Thanks.
Thank you, Blythe. Just to circle back, this has been an item for discussion that we've had amongst the board for a couple of meetings now. I think that during our last discussion, we identified a pretty in-depth, you know, concept analysis in which we looked at the contribution ratios for neighboring communities. Actually, I think we had almost 150 of them throughout the Commonwealth. And it identified that, you know, Norfolk was of some of the highest contributors. So you pair that with the situation that we're in right now in attempts to balance the budget and prepare for the negative impacts coming down the road. You know, we did ask Blythe to come up with everything that she could under the sun to be creative on how we could be more efficient. And this is a shining example of that. Initially, I was wholeheartedly in favor of making the full jump down to the statement requirement of 50%. Since that point, you know, I've heard from a number of individuals in town who've identified, you know, the impact that this would have. When you look at it on paper and see $16 a month for a majority of people, that doesn't really strike you as being too impactful. But if you hear about the annual impact, and if we were to push forward past the 5% we do this year and do another 5% next year, however we lay that out, it does become a little bit more impactful, especially for those that have been understanding this value and budgeting for this value for a long period of time. In addition to that, I've been reading articles about other companies that are looking for efficiencies in their retiree health insurance offerings, particularly one about the U.S. Postal Service. And it, it just, it seems like the risk-benefit ratio might not be as advantageous as I once thought. So I will identify that I was a proponent of this action previously, but now I am a little more hesitant, even at the 5% to move forward. At this time, I'll pass it to the rest of the board for their commentary, starting with CC.
So last time that we spoke about this issue, I was more reticent than you were, if I'm not mistaken. It may have come before us more than once, but my recollection was that my concern was that we were renegotiating a contract after the other side had already sort of retired. That, that felt, felt wrong to me. And Chris had suggested that perhaps we look at how to, you know, addressing people sort of in a, you know, in a tiered way. Is there a way to leave people who are 70 and above alone? That type of thing. And it was determined that you can't do that, that it's sort of an all-or-nothing for retirees. And, and I appreciate that the work that Blythe did in identifying this as a potential, especially in comparison to other communities who already have it as a lower amount, and then being able to pivot and reduce the suggested amount, right? So when we first talked about this, probably in February, maybe it was earlier, but I think it was February, it was 15%, and now it's 5, albeit there is, you know, sort of a step, so you could see where, what monies would be saved in any, in any event. I didn't know then, and I know now, that there would be saved in any, in any event. I didn't know then, and I know now, that there is an insurance advisory committee. And that while most of the members on the insurance advisory committee are current employees, not retirees, that there is a representative, non-voting, who is a retiree. And it's my sense, I'm not, to be clear, rejecting this out of hand. I'm not, I just don't think that we're ready yet to make this move. I'm as mindful as you, Kevin, that there are real people who are on real budgets that we maybe even can't fathom, who are retired, who expected and anticipated and retired, knowing that they were going to get the amount that they were going to get. And that they will be severely, in some cases adversely impacted. And that is a piece that I'm mindful of. I'm also mindful of the fact that we are in a pandemic. And anyone who says it's going to be fine and the economy is going to rebound, I hope you're right. I suspect you're wrong. And so I think that this may be one of the pieces that we may have to look at again. I don't think, I am by no means, as I talked today, rejecting the idea of everything on the table, including how much we pay for retirees. What I do think is right, albeit I am completely mindful, having been given the information from council that we are allowed to do this, I do think it's right to suggest, because spoiler alert, I'm probably going to be making a similar suggestion in the next action item, I do think it's right to suggest that if they are so inclined, and if they're not, then I'll probably, I'll come back and vote without them having been so inclined. But if the insurance advisory committee is so inclined as to meet and bounce amongst themselves, what other things can they do? Or is this it? I think it's right to give them the opportunity to meet so that we have all of the information, both from Blithe's fine numbers, as well as from the people who may be impacted, both current retirees and people who are close to retirement, or people who chose this town over another town because maybe they were going to get more money at retirement. Maybe that was something that they thought of. I don't, I don't know that it was. I guess that's a long-winded way of saying, I don't think I'm ready to vote in favor of this, although I am not saying I am against it. I think that there needs to be more work done with at least giving the insurance advisory committee an opportunity to meet. If they don't meet, if they can't get themselves together, if they decide it's not necessary, they're not interested in hearing from, then I'm voting representative, well, that's on them. And I'll go forward without it. But currently, I think that it needs to be done the right way. There needs to be additional scrutiny in other areas. And that if we come back, this may be a place that there are cuts and it may not. But I don't think it should be the only and an outlier and without the benefit of, now that I know about it, the insurance advisory committee.
Blithe, can you comment on the activity of our insurance advisory committee?
Sure. The insurance advisory committee is made up of one member of each of the unions and a non-union employee. I believe there's a retiree who's played a role, but I actually haven't met that person in the few meetings that we've had. The, I think it's important to point out that retirees are not covered under any union agreements. And so while the insurance advisory can meet and certainly talk about this, that their role is to work together to, with the town to negotiate on behalf of all of the groups and non-union employees, any current employee insurance benefits, because those are, those are considered an item we have to bargain. And so that's really the role of that group. When we went to that group, when we were looking to offer the opt-out plan to current employees to get to bargain those amounts before we brought them to the board. So I would anticipate that if we went to see the IAC, their, their vote would be to not make any change, because it will impact not only current retirees, could impact current retirees, could impact future retirees. We can do it, but I think I'm pretty confident what the outcome will be of that. Thanks.
Thanks, Blithe. Chris, your comments?
Yeah, I think it's, I think one of the, I heard from about six or seven people today, the concerns really focused around, one, the insurance advisory committee was unaware of this, so they couldn't talk to people about this. So I think it was timing. I think, I think the retirees also were unaware of this happening. So they had no time to plan before we even had this pandemic. I also think we have to, you know, this is, this is low-lying fruit. This is an easy one. You just go cut them 5%, you cut them 15%, you cut them 10%. We have to look at the deep cuts. I hate to say, we have to look at the cuts like vehicles. We have to look at the cuts like two highest salaries to certain individuals. Those are the hard choices. Easy choices is to go to the retirees, who 66% of the people affected by this change are over 70 years old. 17% are over 80 years old. They're on fixed income. $16 a month is probably a big deal. There are some retirees in this town who don't receive $400 a month in help. So $152 is a big percentage of their income. So I think handled the wrong way. The retirees were unaware of it. I think we have to relook at it. I think it's easy fruit to pick. I think we got to start to look at the hard choices. So at this time, I am not in favor of moving forward with this motion.
Very good. And yeah, I did like C.C.'s point as well. Sorry, go ahead, C.C.
I was just going to chime in and say that I don't think that there was, that there's anything untoward in any of this, suggesting that potentially one of the places that we could find money was here, is completely valid and creative. And, and that's what we were asking for. I didn't know that the insurance advisory committee had the non-voting member. If I'd known, I would have chimed in about it earlier, but luckily we know now. And in spirit, I agree with Chris. I just think that I want to be mindful of the fact that, or I want to go on record, I guess. I don't want to be mindful of that. I want to go on record as saying, I'm not trying to protect any particular interest group. I think everything is going to be a hard choice. It's not an easy choice to take money from a retiree. It's not an easy choice to take salary from a young parent. None of it is easy. All of it is on the table. That's it.
Thanks, C.C. I mean, that was kind of the point I was going to allude to as well, that while this might not be a prudent first step of items that we see as an efficiency or an opportunity, I think once we get to the point where we start tiering out what our reactions will be to whatever definitive funding levels come from the state as we make it to late summer, early fall, I think having this be as one of our tier two, tier three, tier four items is perfectly within reason, just because of the flurry of things that are going to have to fall into place to be able to meet these parameters. I don't know where that is. I don't know to what scale that is. But I'd be hesitant to say that any singular item in which we identify that we are the outlier compared to the comparative set would be off the table. So it does sound like that the board has consensus that we do not have an appetite to move forward with this at this time, but we would like to keep this on the back burner should we get to the point where we need to start coming up with some tiered mitigation steps and plans for later on this year. Blithe, anything you'd like to add in closing?
Nope. Thanks.
Very good. Chris, anything you'd like to add in closing?
No. Thank you.
C.C.?
No.
Anybody who is in the meeting today, I'll open it up for a quick moment. If anybody has a comment or question related to this agenda item, please use the raise hand function and we'll call on you to share your thoughts. Betsy, I'm going to take a shot in the dark and say you're looking for the raise hand feature, so I'm just going to go ahead and call on you. If you could just say your name and your position.
I am. Sorry, I had to, I lost my internet connection. I had to switch to my phone. So I'm not familiar with the Zoom app on my phone. But just, I'm, I am very glad to hear that you guys aren't ready to take a vote on this. I think most of you know who I am, Betsy Fidgel. I am a 22-year town employee with the Land Use Department. My mother before me is, worked for the town for over 20 years. She's 93 years old. She's a retiree. God bless her. She's still going strong. But, you know, this is just not something I think you guys should even consider. I think you can find other ways to do creative financing. To balance the budget on the retirees' back is just so unfair. And I'm really disappointed that this was even a consideration. I am also on the advisory committee. This has not been brought to our attention, so we have not had an opportunity to meet, to discuss. So I would like, as a representative from the municipal union on the advisory committee, I would like to have an opportunity to see the materials that you guys have presented and discuss with my fellow employees. So, and I really thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Betsy.
All right. Thank you.
Open it up for another quick moment. Anybody who would like to share a question or a comment, please use the raise hand function and we'll call on you. I see a hand for Mr. Hadad. Just name and address first, please, sir. Ed, you are still on mute. There you go.
I just want to say that I do agree with not putting the cuts on the back of retirees. They retired, they expected a benefit, and I think they deserve it and should keep it. However, I think when you start looking into the future, future retirees, I think it's perfectly valid to talk about. If there's an issue, you know, I think that's a perfectly valid conversation to go forward into the future and tightening. But I agree with not touching retirees right now. I think they've earned what they have. They expect it and deserve it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hadad.
I think there are two conversations. The current retirees is off the table, but future contracts and future benefits, I think is a valid conversation, just like anything else.
Understood. Thanks, Ed. I'll open it up for one more moment. To anybody else who would like to share a question or comment, please use the raise hand function. And we are seeing none. Or are we seeing one? Did somebody want to share? Doesn't look like it. All right. Moving on to our next agenda item this evening. Please consider determining the amount of the FY21 operating budget proposed at town meeting. Blithe, where are we now?
We are at the same place we were two weeks ago with an overall budget as proposed right now of 2.43% increase over FY20. Including your packet is a memo that we put together identifying the things that we're doing right now to end FY20 in the best financial shape that we can, given that we're more than three quarters of the way through the years, as well as the information, the things that we're waiting for in terms of decisions made at the state on reductions that will impact our FY21. And the sorts of things that we can do to address that and the various revenue sources that we are tracking and what we need to be thinking about and concerned about. So I'm not sure where you'd like to start in terms of discussion. I can try to touch on some of the points brought up in public comments. Please, please let me know where you'd like to go next.
Yeah, please. If you could go through some of the questions that were highlighted, maybe a high-level overview of the information communicated in the memo would be a good place to start.
Sure. So for right now, as we're operating today, to the question about, you know, buildings open and who's working, we have completely closed the Council on Aging building. There are two employees who are working here at Town Hall and two other employees who are working remotely. We didn't want to continue to clean a building that really had no activity. And so we relocated people. The library is somewhat similar. That building is, does not have anybody working in it regularly, but has staff going in there occasionally to do work. And you have people who are continuing to provide services, programming, content remotely. And their website's a great place to go for that. They are occasionally coming into the building to pick up information and do some tasks. Our, our facility staff has transitioned to a seven-day work week. There is, continues to be some work being done in schools, so I can't tell you exactly at the moment. But we are, we need to transition because we're providing actually more services to police and fire, because those are 24/7 operations and they need a higher level of care as they make sure that their, their buildings and their equipment is cleaned. In the area of state revenue, that's a concern that every town administrator in every community in the state has, waiting to hear when the state is going to make some decisions about its revenue loss and what the reductions are that they'll need to pass on to cities and towns. I think when we talked about this two weeks ago, it was the same, same comment, that that's an important data point that we need to have, because we rely on approximately $4.5 million of state aid in the form of Chapter 70 and lottery receipts that if was cut, would be, would present us with some decisions to make. But having said that, it's not clear what funding is coming from the federal government, whether that will help the state's budget, which in turn helps us, or some will, will, will come flow down to us. Unfortunately, that's the most difficult, difficult part of all of that, is we just don't know that yet. And until we do, it's hard to determine what decisions we need to make to reduce our budgets accordingly. We are tracking expenses we have now, because with the emergency declaration, we're eligible for 75% of those costs that we've been incurring to, to respond to the pandemic so that we can turn those in. We're actually very good at that, having done that with FEMA for a number of years for snowstorms. There's a protocol and we know how to follow it. We've, we've shut down any discretionary spending on the town side, only funding expenses that are required for contracts or our operations. And we have a hiring freeze. We have an open, two open positions right now we haven't filled. And if any others became available, we would look at them very hard, determine whether they were essential or not. In your packet, I've noted that the schools have, Norfolk schools have renegotiated their bus contract because of lack of transportation of students for some savings. And they are starting to think about furloughing positions that are unable to work remotely. I think everyone was, has been waiting to find out whether school would be canceled the rest of the year before any decisions were made on that. And I can't speak to exactly what the school committee has planned, but I know it's something that they are concerned about. In terms of our local receipts, you know, certainly we are going to look at those very closely, and I've identified those in the memo. I think, I do have to say though, to suggest that, you know, $4.5 million of town local receipts as that, as that issue is, as a, is a, I don't think is realistic. For instance, almost $2 million is excise tax. And while I fully expect that there'll be people who have a difficult time paying that bill on time when it comes in February, or chooses not to buy a new car, that will impact us. I don't think that people are going to be, on the whole, getting rid of cars and we will see a dramatic, a dramatic drop. I think we will see some level of drop. Another area for us is ambulance receipts. And while people may be hesitant to go to the hospital today, I am sure that they still will over time and will see some, perhaps some fluctuations. But, you know, I think that will be fairly well on track. you know, I think that will be fairly well on track. And in the area of building permits, uh, we've checked in on the major projects that are slated to move forward in the next few months. Camjor Coatings, a couple of the 40B projects, and we understand that those are all on track. So while I expect we will see some drop in permit revenue by people choosing to not do an addition or build a deck, I mean, and, or put off building a house. Um, right now, we, we are not seeing a drop in those. And to say the things that would bring in the most money, we believe are on track. So, um, I could go into more detail, but I don't want to go on unnecessarily. I, I hope that gives a good overview of what you were looking for.
Um, thank you, Blight. From my perspective, I think that was a great entry point into the discussion. Um, I will say from my perspective, the last time that we spoke about this agenda item, I think the board was in consensus that we, we needed more information to be able to make a, a decision or a recommendation on the final number to be able to bring to town meeting. As it stands right now, our town meeting is currently scheduled for June 9th. Uh, given Governor Baker's directive earlier today, uh, identifying that schools will be closed throughout the rest of the school year, as well as, uh, non-essential daycare is being closed until June 29th, I have a concern about that date. And I do believe at some point, we're going to have to reassess, uh, the rescheduling of that date. Um, as that pertains to this conversation, you know, we have a few options that we laid out in terms of how we react to some of the things that are going on right now. If we were to move forward with a June 9th town meeting, uh, we could potentially vote the budget that we have in front of us right now with the idea that once the state actualizes impacts for us, we would make adjustments in the fall. Um, but with the understanding that we would have lost five months for FY21 at that point and would probably have to make some more drastic changes to be able to make up the difference throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. Uh, the other way we could go is on our June 9th town meeting, we could vote a rounded number of 15% reduction. We could say that's going to impact us by about a million dollars. And then in the adverse, in our fall town meeting, once we have some actualized values, we could bring back whatever we needed to, provided that the impact was not as bad as we anticipated. And finally, I mean, and it seems like the more prudent option, at least from my perspective, before we have our discussion this evening, is to push our town meeting, um, along with the legislation that was provided that allows towns to be able to leverage 1/12 of their FY20 budget to continue into FY21, um, and give us some more time to get some actual impact numbers and make those adjustments for a finalized FY21 budget, um, going past our June 30th date. Um, I did want to note too, we did get a flurry of emails from residents, which we always appreciate. Um, I hope that we were able to bridge some gaps in understanding and connect some dots in terms of relevant information, um, but we do appreciate all the insights and the perspective that was shared with the board leading up to the conversation. That being said, I will turn it over to my fellow board members. This time we'll start with Mr. Weider. Go ahead, sir.
Kevin, I missed one thing. What were you saying about cutting 50% at town meeting? You had said something about cutting 50%.
So what I had presented in my little decision tree here was, you know, going two ways with moving forward with the town meeting on June 9th. Either we keep the budget as is and we react to whatever actualizes in the fall. Um, or we take a proactive step to reduce funding, um, across the board. And then in the fall, we bring things back if the impact is not as negative as anticipated. Those are the two options I gave for keeping a town meeting on June 9th.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think, um, I, I think we, we certainly, we can't, we, the wait and see attitude, just, it doesn't make sense. Um, everybody knows there's going to be an impact. Our cherry sheets amount to 4.2 million without our local receipts. Uh, as Blight said, the 40Bs are on track. 40Bs are on track for approval of comprehensive permits. They are not on track for actual construction, which would bring in local receipts. So the impact of those will probably fail in FY21. Uh, I think, I, I don't like the idea just across the board cut. I mean, uh, one of the things I had an opportunity to do was to with Dr. Alardi and you start to understand some of the school budget items, special needs, things that really can't be cut. So I don't think we just say across the board cut. But I think we have to already start asking every department what they can cut. And maybe it's similar to what she did with, Blight did with the health insurance, is what would a 10% cut result in? What would a 15% cut result in? What can you do? And how much can you cut? And know that now before we get to town meeting. And then we can approve maybe a partial budget, or we can approve a 15% cut or a 20% cut, and then come back in the fall or at a special town meeting and restore some of the budgets that we've taken away. But I think it's got to be, the departments have to all take a serious look at their department, see where we can make moves. I mean, I think right now, like I said, the library is open. Why? The library should be closed. You know, people are at home, they have the internet, there's learning going on. That's one building we probably don't have to clean. We can start doing things now. The council of the aging, how many people? No one's going near the elderly except for emergencies. So we could probably do some furl- furloughs there. We could probably do some furloughs at the library. We could probably use the IT guy at the library to help out Ton at the town hall. I think we got to move quickly because as you said, if we wait for FY21, every day is another day lost. And we can't afford that because we don't know if this number's 4 million, but we also don't know if this number's 9 million. And we all know that we have a very tight budget. There isn't a lot of money here to throw around. So any cuts are going to impact people. And that's tough. I don't want to wait till the fall and then tell departments we're going to cut them by five and six people, or we're going to wipe out a department. I think it's better if we let those people start now, really taking a serious look, see where they can make their cuts. Look at this year as well, because maybe we can pick up some free cash. I know the bus company reduced their monthly billing by 20%. I think that's outstanding to do it proactively. I think every department has to start looking at that right now. And I think we have to do a serious look at every department, looking at 20%, 25%. Some can't do that, but really taking a strong look. I think it's hard to ask the schools because they just got the mandate today from the state. And I think, uh, Dr. Alardi will do a good job, and so will the, uh, regional school system of looking at their budgets. But I think, um, I think this has to happen now. And I don't want to cry Chicken Little, but it's going to happen. It is going to happen and it's going to impact all of us. We're all seeing it already. Small businesses, we're all seeing it right now. We're hanging on. So it's going to be tough for everybody, but I think we have to start this now. And to wait till September, October, November, I, I think we, we, as you had stated, we will lose all that time. And then we're looking at cutting departments, not just cutting a few individuals, or cutting some hours, or cutting some other items. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, so just to clarify, um, obviously what I had laid out were very, very vague, generic directions, uh, based on, you know, my interactions with our state representation, with our neighboring communities, with, you know, other counterparts around the state. Um, they weren't definitive actions whatsoever. Uh, they were more supposed to be based on, we can either go with the more proactive step, go with the more laid back step. Um, but I, I do want to quickly get your opinion on pushing town meeting into FY21 and leveraging the option that we have to carry over 1/12 funding from prior year to give us more time to get a more defined impact number. Was that something that you were interested in? Or was that something that you had just thrown to the side in favor of being more proactive with cuts?
If it helps, if it helps the departments put together a reduction plan, absolutely. If the departments feel that will be of help to them to put together a reduction plan, I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, Cece, go right ahead.
Unmuting myself. So to echo what Chris just said, um, relative to, um, moving town meeting into FY21, I agree with that idea and here's why. Um, I understand that our options, as I, as you outlined them, and correct me if I'm wrong, are to vote up the budget as is in our packet, uh, down the budget as in our packet, um, or punt basically, again, as we did two weeks ago. It's my understanding that, again, while we don't have any firm numbers from the administration, there was a consensus revenue hearing last week and multiple experts testified at that hearing with all sorts of doom and gloom, um, projections. Um, but, and if I, um, I'm going to double check her name. Her name was Eileen McInaney. Um, is apparently well regarded by all and had a somewhat conservative estimate as to the impact of the pandemic. And conservative estimate, well regarded by all, was pegged at 14, 4.4% down, um, which is an incredible number. Um, hold on while I do the math for you people. It's about, it's about $4 billion down from where they anticipated being. So $4 billion ago, I was in full support of the budget as it is right now. I stood up, I advocated for it, I would have voted for it today. But now we have a potential, and I get it, it's a potential, which is why I love the idea of punting. I'm always a fa- a proponent of punting. I love it because we don't know, although we, I think we know, right? We're all saying we don't know, um, that maybe everything will rebound. But I think that we do know that things could be catastrophic. And to be able to take advantage of this time, I think, uh, is worthwhile. Because, well, I know, um, just to go back for a second, I know that we've been getting, um, a flurry of emails, um, on both sides of the, of the aisle, right? Or, or of the ledger. There's the people who are saying, we have to cut now, uh, the sky is falling. And we have the people who say, hold steady, let's leave it the way it is. The sky isn't falling, we'll be fine. One of them is right, uh, and one of them was wrong. And, and, and we all hope that the sky isn't falling are right, um, but, but, but they may not be. Um, and I know that some are troubled at what they perceive as exploitation of the situation, right? There's this sense that people who have been propounding that we cut and slash, um, the budget are now seizing upon this pandemic as an opportunity. And I suspect there's actually some people who are viewing it as an opportunity. But I also suspect that 90% of the people who are on the side of cutting the budget really aren't opportunistic at all. Uh, they're just as terrified as the rest of us about whether or not we're going to have the money. Um, and the reality is, is we may not unless we at least take a look at what we can do now. So, um, it's my view that we have this opportunity, um, that we take advantage of it. I know that, um, Walpole, if I'm not mistaken, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Walpole is looking at a, um, 10% down budget. And Plainville is looking at a 10% down budget, but asking that everyone also give numbers for 15%. Um, and, and I asked, and I don't have the answer back, whether that was from zero down 10 or from the standard 2.5 down 10. I don't know that it matters, right? It's a lot. It's a huge number. Um, and it's got to come from all sorts of places. I agree with Chris. It can't just be an across the board, um, cut. It needs to be more creative than that. It needs to be more organic than that. Everything unfortunately has to be looked at again. Um, I don't think that we can just bury our head in the sand and say, hey, this is going to be fine. It's great. Not being able to send my children to school or put them in daycare is not, is not going to impact my ability to earn a living at all. No problem. I think that we can't ignore the fact that there is going to be a huge reduction in real estate taxes, um, because people aren't going to be able to pay those things. I think that we can't discount the fact that we're probably not going to get any prison mitigation money or other earmarks. There's going to be a lot of money we're not going to get. I think we plan for it now. Um, and maybe we're wrong. And isn't that great? We're wrong. Or alternatively, while we're spending this time figuring out where we can cut, if anywhere, if we determine that we can't cut anywhere, then, then the people of the town can decide whether they want an override. I don't want an override, but it may be that people think, hey, is, the economy be damned. We think that all of the stuff should be left exactly as it is and we're willing to tax everybody to get it. But, uh, to, um, from my position today, I think that, um, the economy has taken a hit. It means, um, that our income as a town has taken a hit. It would be great. We don't know. Maybe in a few weeks we will. Maybe before we have to make an ultimate determination, we hear from the federal government that they've got a municipal bailout. That'd be wonderful. Uh, but if we don't hear about a municipal bailout, if there is no municipal bailout, if the tax revenue goes down as we anticipated, uh, if there is no prison mitigation and other earmarks go away, I think Kevin's point, uh, we are better off addressing it now when we have, um, some leverage than if we address it in October. I think that's it. And I will, I will mute myself.
Thanks, Cece. Um, far be it for me to use Twitter as a reference point for directional budget information, but I did note today that would be identified next step for federal support was to look at state and local, um, mitigation funding, uh, to help with the impact of this. Obviously, that way has no bearing whatsoever in how we should be doing our planning, but just the fact that it hasn't mentioned and is likely top of mind as we work our way into the next steps of federal support. Uh, I did want to note that that was something that was mentioned. Um, Blight, do you want to provide a little bit of insight as to what's going with the 1/12 budget from FY20 means and how we would execute that?
So, um, I'm, haven't had the, uh, pleasure or the pain of working through a 1/12 budget in my 30 years. Um, but as I generally understand it, you get approval from the state to, because you're in an emergency, you can't pass a budget, uh, to operate, uh, month by month. And, and the budget is exactly what it says. You can spend 1/12, um, of what your FY20 budget was. So, um, you, you can't, you can't increase employee compensation. You go, you stay at the same levels you were at in FY20. Um, you can pay your, your, the bills that you need to pay, but we need some direction as to, for instance, we, Norfolk always takes advantage of paying our whole pension assessment in July because we get a discount for doing so. We need to learn whether or not that's, how that will work in a 1/12 budget situation. But I, I do agree that especially if the, if the emergency isn't lifted or we feel strongly that people wouldn't feel safe coming to a town meeting because the emergency's still in place or is lifted, but it's still concerning that waiting till, uh, into the next fiscal year to pass a budget is more prudent. I also think it gives us the time to understand what cuts are coming from other levels of government because I think besides putting together a reduction plan overall, um, for the organization, town and schools, um, we would need to understand what our reduction needs to be. So I think part of the solution is, is negotiating with our various town and school employee unions over some changes that can help us get to this. Um, and we could certainly cut positions throughout the organization and, and shrink the size of our local government, uh, but I think it needs to be with everybody understanding what those service changes will be and, you know, uh, being able to, to come to some consensus. That's what we want to put forward to town meeting. And if we can negotiate some changes that lower our, our, our overall salary costs, hopefully that's a solution that, um, preserves, um, services that people, that our residents want and preserves, uh, some jobs that help make those happen. So I think it's a partnership. Um, the only thing I would ask is that if there's absolutely any areas of the town government that you think are critical and you wouldn't want to see changed, um, it would be helpful for me to know that so that as we go forward with a plan, I don't bring back something that you say, well, we didn't want that. You know, as we've been talking about some of these other things, some clarity upfront would be very helpful. Um, but as Todd and I spoke about this today, we, we need to go through the budget and absolutely identify what are, what are fixed costs that we, we, we absolutely have no ability to change, whether there are certain level of utilities or that pension assessment. And then we can identify what is up for, uh, for discussion in expenses and salaries throughout the rest of the organization and schools and determine what's a, um, appropriate way to go about, uh, figuring out where those reductions can be made that's least impactful to our residents and keeps the services and as much intact as we can that they, you know, they moved here and they, they've come to expect. So I would, I would agree to wrap, wrap it back around, I would agree with Cece that punting at this point is a good plan. Um, and hopefully later this week when we understand how long the stay-at-home advisory will be in place and when we can have a meeting gives us a better chance of understanding what we're working against. Thanks.
Thanks, Blight. Um, so let me just sit on a couple of things real quick. I see Cece. I think you want to jump back in. Thanks, Blythe. So let me just sit on a couple of things real quick. I see Cece, I think you want to jump back in again. Two things, the term punting has such a negative connotation to it. I don't see this as necessarily punting. I see this more as being able to wait for more definitive numbers to make the best decision and direction possible. If punting kind of feels like you're kicking the can down the road and not trying to address something.
Still score points with a punt, Kevin. It may not be seven, it's only three, but it's point scoring. All good.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into the terminology of field goal versus punting, but punting is a strategic item that is used for the greater good at the end, so I agree with you there. The second thing I was going to mention was, you know, Cece had mentioned, there was a Senate Ways and Means hearing on the projections and impact of the states in which they had a flurry of very engaging and entertaining presenters come up and outline exactly what their projections looked like for what we're going to expect going into next fiscal year for the statewide revenues. And as she had mentioned, a lot of it was doom and gloom. There was a lot of people who were identifying that they're speaking conservatively, but still coming up with these numbers like 4.4 billion in shortfall. But the one thing that was never discussed was what we would expect the impact to be from that at the local level. We don't know if there's going to be some sort of mitigation at the state level in which, you know, some kind of stabilization is used for some aspects of local government or if that's going to be entirely passed on to the municipalities. That was the piece of it that I was hoping to get some kind of direction on, and obviously that was never discussed or touched on. I will also note, I think out of the nine presenters at that hearing, only one of them did not agree with the 4.4, around about number billion. So it did seem like there was a consensus that that was a pretty good direction in terms of what we could expect. That being said, sorry, Cece, go right ahead.
Nope, I was just goofing on you.
Oh, very good. Chris?
Very hard to goof on doom.
We've addressed it. I think we have to, I think we should start with looking at our cherry sheet numbers, which is about $4.2 million. And I think we, that almost may have to be our benchmark, is that if we don't get any state aid, not taking into account the reductions in local aid or in real estate taxes, that's probably going to be our base number, and it could go up from there. So I think that might be something when, I think Blythe and Todd already know our fixed costs, that's easy. We have them in our package tonight. So I think it's looking, and again, working with all the departments. I think that's key. And I think you start with the school, the schools now, you start with all the unions now. And you start talking to them now. You don't wait. And I know there's been a hesitation saying that we don't know what the number is, so we don't know if we can, you know, we can have some validity to our discussion. Sure you can, because the alternative is layoffs, and I think none of us want to see that happen. So I think, yes, it is everybody's advantage to start this discussion now. Massachusetts today came out also and said 9% reduction in real estate sales in March. That was March. April, we're going to see probably twice that. So get ready, it's coming.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody would disagree that it's coming. I think everybody understands pretty well that there is going to be something coming that's going to require some drastic changes to how we operate and how we plan. It's just a matter of being able to do that as accurately as possible. The other thing I wanted to note, I believe that in 2007, 2008, if you go back and look at some of the fun videos that are out there, the board at the time had presented a tiered approach to what to expect that they went into budgeting for the next fiscal year after the recession. Essentially, they laid it out and said, okay, well, you know, if we realize a 10% reduction, if we realize a 50% reduction, if we realize a 20% reduction, these are the steps that we'll take at each of those levels. And they brought that to town meeting and said, hey, we have this level budget, this level, this level, this level. If we realize anything within this range, this is our reaction. Blythe, can you speak to our ability to be able to put something like that together? Or any downfalls with that approach that I'm not seeing?
Yeah, we certainly can do that. You know, we have, we have positions in some departments saying with retirements and things that we could, you know, look at not filling for next year. And, you know, we can come up with a plan at different levels, that's absolutely possible. My only point, I mean, I think all of our employees understand this and our unions understand it. My only, I'm not looking to wait, I want to be clear. I just want to put the town in the best negotiating position to be able to make the reductions that we need to, to balance the budget. And I, and I think our, our employees and the unions care about the service level our residents receive. And I think that they'll be a partner with us in that so that we can continue the service delivery people want. And we will figure out the reductions that work best for the community overall. That's my only reason why I'm suggesting or want to know more about what definitive cuts there are so we can work to get those dealt with. And more, when we, you know, look again at our local receipts and our impact on taxes and we come up with that overall plan. What I'm looking for is direction from you on what percentage differences, if you're ready to do that tonight or you want to wait is fine. So we know what we're coming back to you with. And if there's any areas you absolutely don't want to see touched for whatever reason, I don't want to bring you back a plan that shows those reduced. You know, I want a plan that's responsive to your request. Thanks.
Thanks, Blythe. Cece, did you want to add something?
Yeah, so I was goofing before saying I was just goofing on you. But what I had wanted to say and then had a senior moment and forgot is that, well, punt may have a poor connotation. I by no means am suggesting the colloquialism of punt where we just do kind of what we did last time two weeks ago. Let's wait and see. I think that we need to assume, and hope to be pleasantly surprised, but assume the doom and gloom proclamation and try to see what we can do to rework the budget now. But to Blythe's point, I will say I'm not prepared tonight to say, Blythe, I think you should see what you can do to tool the budget down 10% across the board or leave these things out. But I know that I will need to be able to talk to you about that in short order. But beyond that, I would say that I think that we need to do it right away. Because, and I'm going to dovetail with what Chris said. If people, and I understand that Blythe had been concerned that there may be organizations, unions, et cetera, who may say, well, we don't see any evidence that this is going to be, have a long-term catastrophic impact. We're not willing to work with you. I think most people can see it. But if they can't, the answer I think is, well, then you're going to have to see what happens if there's a vote for an override. If there's no money there, there's no money there. I mean, the reality is what the reality is. So I think that we need to start now, tomorrow, sharpening our pencils yet again with an eye towards what I think is going to happen with the budget. And Blythe, to your point, we need to get to you what it is that we think should be left alone, if anything, right? I, I know that there's been some, we'll just use as, as an example, I'll just use as an example the suggestion tonight of reduction of retirees' pay. And there was pushback and how dare we suggest that's outrageous. And maybe, how dare we, right? Maybe outrageous, but it's all on the table, all of it. Every single thing, at least until we decide it's not, is on the table. Because every single thing, somebody thinks is unfair to be looked at and somebody else thinks it's unfair that they not look at it. And everybody's got something that if we cut it, impacts them adversely and they will feel like something else should have been cut instead. So there may be things, to Chris's point, certainly there's some things, especially within the school system, you know, and we'll use Dr. Alardi's example from the speech that she gave last fall. And then again, a few weeks ago, some of the work that they've done relative to keeping students in the school rather than sending them to other schools may appear as an expense, as an outlay. But if you consider how much you're saving on the other end, right? There's things like that that you really ought not to touch because if you touch them, you end up adversely impacting students and you also end up bumping up your budget. So obviously, there are things that we're not going to want to touch. But there's other things that touching may only mean looking at and discounting. There's other things that it may be reducing a small amount. There's other things that it may be reducing a larger amount. I can't say it tonight. I can only say that it needs to get started right away because the alternatives are either there's no money there and we have that special town meeting where there are drastic cuts beyond which we can imagine, or there's an election and a vote for an override. And whether or not that survives or not, I candidly think it wouldn't. But, you know, I've been surprised before. So I think that all I wanted to say was that punting for me doesn't mean adopting the same wait-and-see that I had adopted two weeks ago, that we had adopted two weeks ago. It is starting tomorrow, getting going, and hoping that we're pleasantly surprised, but expecting that we're not.
Thank you, Cece. And wholeheartedly agree. I mean, the idea behind leveraging our ability to extend our FY20 budget into the next fiscal year is to give us the time to put something like this together for immediate action once the time or the opportunity presents itself. We definitely do not want to sit here and wait and then start this conversation once a more defined number comes across the board. Completely agree with that. Chris, anything that you'd like to add before we move on?
I think Blythe's looking for direction. I think Blythe, the direction probably has to be assume 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%. And I think you have to leave it up to departments to tell us, you know, tier their, tier their reductions. So that example, I don't know what column the retirees' reduction would be in, but whoever's responsible with that, that might be a tier two or a tier three. And I think the reductions have to be associated and have to include a reduction, and what would be the reduction in labor? So in other words, what's the number of people who'd be cut and what would be the dollar amount, and then tier it. And I think, again, we're not the experts on that, obviously. The experts are the people who run their divisions, and they have to take an honest look at their divisions and tell us what those things are. So I say, nothing's off the table, but they should tier them. And I would go from 5% to 20%. And again, give us the labor associated with that so we can understand, as you call it, the service reduction. Obviously, I'm assuming if we're cutting people, we're cutting service so that we can evaluate that as we move into FY21 and a town meeting at that time. That'd be my answer, Kevin.
Thanks, Chris. And just to clarify, when you say 5%, 10%, 15% or 20%, you're talking about the town's overall budget or just the state aid portion?
No, no, that's the town's overall budget, because if you, if you look at it, 10% would be $4 million. There's your cherry sheet. 5% is $2 million, so we'll take into account, maybe it won't be as bad as everybody says. But it might be $6 million, it might be $8 million. So we might as well look at every single aspect because it could be, yeah, even though we say it might not be, it could be as bad as $9 million.
Just want to clarify, thank you. Blythe, I'll have to get back to you. I want to do a little bit of digging into some of the conversations that are going through other boards and committees around us. But similar to Cece, I will follow up shortly to give my perspective on that.
I would just point out quickly at the budget.
Go ahead, Blythe.
Not looking at schools, but $9 million is all of public safety, all of public works, and most of general government. So just to put it in perspective for everyone.
Understood, thank you. So it sounds like the board's consensus is to take this direction to leverage our 1/12 option. We'll obviously pick up the conversation about what we do at town meeting at a later date, once it's on our agenda. But I would like to open it up to attendees at this time, if you would like to ask a question or present a comment. I just ask that you please keep it relevant to this current agenda item. And if you could, please keep it as short as possible. We are running pretty behind at this point. I see one individual, Mr. Hadad, go right ahead, sir, if you'd be so kind as to just share your name and address before you come.
I have had 138 Red Maple Run. I just want to comment on two things. One thing that I've heard and one thing that I didn't hear. I guess the thing that I didn't like to hear is override, because I didn't hear any concern for the taxpayers. Does anybody think that there aren't laid-off people and business owners in Norfolk that are suffering also? So I'm surprised no one's even mentioned that concern. So I don't like the word override because I think everyone has to share in the crisis that the residents are feeling. This is not just about town workers only, because there are people out there. We talked about seniors, there are seniors on fixed income who have lost, losing their 401K plans. There's business owners that have lost their businesses, there are service providers that have no income at all. And no one's talking about those people at all. And I'm a bit surprised to hear that, to be honest with you. So that's all I have to say.
Well, I mean, I would say, Mr. Hadad, that much of this conversation is centered around the impact to residents as a whole. I mean, we are talking about the mitigation method that they pertain to our operations at town hall and in our town departments. But, you know, when Cece referenced a override, it was with the pretense that it's an option for the residents. That isn't something that the board would necessarily bring to everybody and say, this is what we want to do. That's something that we'd be looking for feedback from the residents on. And if the majority of residents in our town want the ability to weigh in on something like that, I don't believe it's part of our purview to tell them that that's off the table. I think that's something that's driven by the residents as a majority, as opposed to the board presenting options. So I understand what you're saying, and I just want to make sure that you understand that whatever we're talking about here today is framed in how we can best serve the town, whether it be the services, whether it be the staff that's available to them, or whether it be the impact financially on them. This is all framed with how it impacts our residents.
Well, that conversation of an override, to your point of, of we're losing things that we really need, I think that conversation is best spoken about at a later date. I think the first priority now is to look at what can we cut without really serious damage? And worst case maybe is the word override from, but I think it's very premature to even raise that in a conversation.
Thank you, sir. The next handoff I see is Dr. Alardi. Go right ahead.
All right, just need to unmute. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. And first, thank all of the board members for the diligence and the challenge, and Blythe as well, in balancing the budget, given the really challenging circumstances we're all faced with. At the school side, we have been aggressively looking at how to create additional savings throughout the school closure and how that could help support some funding, whether it's funding back to the town or whether it's to offset some budget costs that we anticipate for the summer and for the fall. But in conversations with colleagues, I know many towns at this point are looking at the potential of a 10% to 15% reduction in state aid and developing alternate budget plans with that in mind. My understanding is that that would, a 10% to 15% reduction in state aid would realize about $1 million in lost revenue for the town, where a 10% to 15% reduction in the overall town budget is a significantly higher number. So I'm just looking for direction as to, to help the school committee and help us in terms of strategically planning, which of those two numbers are you looking at at this point? The 10% to 15% reduction in state aid, which would be about $1 million, or the 10% to 15% overall? Just for us to be able to move forward and develop appropriate plans.
I don't know if I'm necessarily ready to say what that would be. I mean, we would want to, you know, research and get that to you as soon as possible. But I'll toss it to my fellow board members to give their individual perspective. But from my perspective, I don't know if I'm ready to necessarily identify that. Cece, go right ahead.
So I would chime in and say that, a couple of things. One, that I agree that I don't know that I'm necessarily ready to give a figure, but I will say that Plainville has asked all departments, it's not just the school, all departments. It's not just reducing based on state aid, it's all departments. And I'm mindful that Plainville's not Norfolk, and that they have had some other financial losses as a result of things like the casino, et cetera. But they have asked all departments to come in at down 10% from zero, down 10%. Walpole, same thing. Now, Plainville's actually asked them to sketch out what down 20 would be. I can't even imagine. But they've asked them... I can't even imagine, but they've asked them, all departments. So I take that, looking at my notes, I take all departments to mean all departments, not just based on state aid for schools, et cetera. So I understand that those numbers are different. I'm happy to go back and ask more questions, and then maybe we can come to some sort of a meeting of the minds of what that number looks like. The only other thing that I want to say while I have the mic, and I understand that as the boss, Kevin, you don't like us to do point counterpoint, I just want to say, I loathe the idea of an override. I think it's incredibly scary, and that's why I brought it up today, and I'll keep bringing it up because it's never too early to let people know that either we figure this out together as a community, or that's the risk. So just for anyone admonishing me that I shouldn't mention words before I decide that I'm ready to mention them, I decided I'm ready to mention it today because unless we figure this out, that's what's going to happen, although quite honestly, I think in our town it would get voted down. But that's our exposure. So to answer Dr. Allardy's question, I think it's probably town-wide, department-wide, but I would like more time.
Thank you, CC. Chris, go right ahead.
I would, Dr. Allardy, I'd probably agree with CC. I think it has to be based on the town overall budget, so maybe a 10% or 15% on the town's overall budget. I think I'm just looking at every, the cherry sheet items, that they may not be available to us. And I think that's would be my perspective, is looking at those cherry sheet items at 4.2 million, and that's where we should probably be basing it on. And what the reduction's going to be to the towns, I think that's the crystal ball that none of us have. The state has not given us any guidance on that yet. Until they do, I think we have to take a very conservative approach.
Thank you, Chris. I will just note that I have been in pretty close contact with Chairman Johnson from the Select Board in Plainville. And as CC had noted, they are experiencing a much different financial outlook than we are right now. And I do believe that that directive for 10%, 15%, and 20% reductions overall came before even COVID was being discussed. That was just the situation that they're currently in right now and having to get very creative with the way that they move forward as a municipality. He did note that they are looking for estimates about what the impact of COVID would be, but as it pertains to their current proposal, it is a side note, not something that is being included in their current proposal that they've laid out for the town. They've been having some special budget meetings specifically with individuals to discuss their situation. And so, yeah, definitely something that we want to look at overall. I, just like I said before, I'm not sure if I'm ready to talk about a specific number just yet.
Kevin, can I ask you? Yep, if you're double checking my numbers, can you tell me what you know about Walpole?
I don't know anything about Walpole, and I'm not trying to double check your numbers. I just wanted to highlight the fact that that's just the financial situation that they're in right now. That wasn't specifically related to COVID. That's all. Dr. Allardy, is there anything else that you'd like to add to your comment?
No, it would just be helpful for us, as the board has a better sense of what the revenue picture is going to look like, there's a dramatic difference in terms of services and what we would be able to do with $1 million town loss versus $4 million. They're very different strategic approaches. So the earlier you have a sense of what those numbers look like, the easier it would be for us to develop a realistic and thoughtful plan to respond. And as both you and CC have referred to, Plainville is looking at significant cuts across the board, but they've been talking about a 10% reduction since January, and we're planning an override, which is not realistic in this current economic climate. So as you mentioned, Kevin, it's not strictly in relation to COVID, their budget crisis situation that they are in.
Thank you very much, Ingrid. And just a side note, I was corrected. Plainville was looking at a 10% cut before COVID and 20% after COVID. So CC, you are absolutely correct. Moving on to our next commenter, it looks like I have Jen Nguyen there. Go right ahead, Ms. Nguyen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. First of all, I want to tell the Select Board, thank you very much. I realize that you are under an extreme pressure and have many, many, myriad of issues to think about, so thank you. Second of all, I want to say that I've been in Norfolk for a very long time, and we have all worked together in the departments to come up with something. So what I'm asking the board is, can we, obviously, we have the data now, we kind of have a better handle on the fiscal climate of what's going on. Can we come up with a middle number? Because it's obviously not just the Select Board that makes the number. It has to go through advisory and ultimately town meeting. Can we come up with a number, as Dr. Allardy said, and so that we know what we're working with? And then if we need to make more cuts, we make more cuts later on, which I know some people might not be totally comfortable with, but maybe we make some cuts tonight so that we have a number that we can go back and all departments can work together to come up with something to cut and then go in. If things are better in June, great, then we change the number. If things are worse, we change the number. But in my opinion, personal opinion, as a Norfolk person who cares very deeply about this town, let's come up with a middle ground. That's it.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. Hadad, I see your hand is still up. Was there something else that you wanted to say, or is that just not lowered?
No, I just wanted to ask the question about the schools. I know Dr. Allardy hears this conversation because she's on the call, but how does this get communicated to the regional operation? Is it Dr. Allardy's responsibility, or is it the Select Board, or is it Blais' responsibility of this conversation?
No, Blais, go right ahead.
I would say that's my responsibility to contact Superintendent Zinni and have that conversation with him, and also to liaise with my counterparts in Rentham and Plainville because two of three towns have to approve a budget, so it'd be helpful to understand where they are in this whole process. I think we have a fairly good understanding about Plainville. I don't know exactly where Rentham stands right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blais. Thank you, Mr. Hadad. Ingrid, I see your hand up again. Is there something else you wanted to share?
Just one quick thing, in as far as communication with King Philip as well, I'm happy to relate that information to Mr. Zinni. We have been speaking daily regarding our students' programming, so I'm happy to pass that on. Additionally, one thing that, as far as timeline, and part of the reason why having a sense of the number early is helpful, is both KP and the Norfolk Public Schools have a clause in our teacher's contract for issuing reduction in force notices. We discussed at our last school committee meeting that the committee is potentially going to issue reduction in force notices to all non-professional status staff in case we have to make those additional cuts, but KP would need to do the same. And I believe they have the same last draft deadline, contract deadline of June 15th, to issue those notices.
Thank you very much, Dr. Allardy. I see one other attendee with her hand up. Donna Jones, go right ahead.
Hi, Donna Jones, North Street. The board, Blais, and probably Todd, spent a wonderful Saturday in February going over everybody's budget. If there's anyone listening that hasn't seen that, you can get a lot of details if you go to NCTV's Facebook page and watch that. It was very helpful. At that time, the departments explained why they asked for what they asked for, so you can learn some of the things that they'll have to end up cutting. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Great point. I'll do one last call for anybody who'd like to ask a question or make a comment as it relates to the budget discussion. I am not seeing anyone else for the budget, so I will propose that we move on. Our next item on the agenda this evening is to please consider authorizing a professional engineering services agreement for the Town Center wastewater master plant study. Lord, that is a lot of words. Blais, a little bit of background, please.
Yes, earlier this year, through the efforts of our town planner, Rich McCarthy, he applied for a state housing choice grant to, for $224,000 to fund a wastewater master plant study for the town center. This was originally envisioned as part of gathering more information to help the B-1 Working Committee inform that group of what was possible in the center with the package plant that we have and other possible opportunities. And the state awarded that grant. Kevin and Rich and I went to the award ceremony in Brockton. Following the town's protocol, we put out an RFP and selected Woodard and Curran for this work. I've identified the reasons why in your packet. We've also included the contract that's been negotiated with them and the state contract that we have for the work to be done and evidencing that we have the funds in place. So we're asking for the board's approval to execute the agreement.
Thank you very much, Blais. Start with CC. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, none.
Chris, questions, comments?
Blais, the $16,000 difference between what we received for the grant and what's the contract that's coming out of the, what budget is that coming out of, or where's that coming out of? The grant was for 224 and the contract's for 240, so I was wondering, well, I guess the question is, why are they, I guess, obviously, the lowest bid was 240, but where are we getting that $16,000 to make up the difference from the grant?
I'm going to have to check with Rich because I believe it was all being funded by the agreement. Is he still on the call? Perhaps he can participate in answering that question?
Sure.
Oh, excellent.
I am still on there listening. So that was a, the contract is to be, is 224. That was incorrect number that was in that contract. That's one of the details we had to clean up from the review of the contract. So there is no money coming from the town to pay this. It's just $224,000 from the state grant.
So the contract in our package amount is wrong. It should be 224, right, Rich?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris? Rich, I'm going to throw you on mute as you have some very loud individuals at your house. Chris, anything else from your end?
Nope, that's it.
Very good. With that, I would move that the board approve a contract with Woodward and Curran to conduct the Town Center wastewater master plant study, and I'm going to throw on there in the amount of $224,000 just to ensure that we're level setting on what the expectation is.
I agree.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye. Christopher Weeder?
Aye.
CC Van Tine?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the request by the Cactus and Succulent Society of Massachusetts to hold a cactus and succulent plant sale on the town hill from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 12, 2020. Blais, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Are you thinking that September 12th is a pretty safe date now, huh?
I sure hope so.
Chris, any comments or questions?
Nope, it's a great event. I hope that they can hold it at that time.
Absolutely. CC, comments, questions?
No.
Thank you. With that, I would move that the board approve the request by the Cactus and Succulent Society of Massachusetts to hold a cactus and succulent plant sale on the town hill from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 12, 2020. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye. Christopher Weeder?
Aye.
CC Van Tine?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Our next item is to please consider proclaiming May 3 through 9, Children's Mental Health Week. Blais, any additional background?
No, I think the email in your packet's self-explanatory. We put together the proclamation as they had proposed. They've asked if anyone would like to light up a town monument in green. We can do that, but we would need to procure green lights, so we haven't planned that unless you so choose.
CC, questions, comments?
I would not advocate for spending extra money on green lights, but other than that, I think it's great.
Thank you very much. Chris, questions, comments?
No comments. I think it's great. Thank you.
And I'm in full agreeance as well. So all of that being said, I would move that the board proclaim May 3 through the 9, 2020, as Children's Mental Health Week in Norfolk and execute a proclamation for this purpose. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion within the board? Hearing none? All those in favor, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye. Christopher Weeder?
Aye.
CC Van Tine?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is to please discuss the status of the budget for the construction of the Holbrook Street well field. Blais, lead us into this one.
Sure. So as you know, the town has been working for a number of years to develop a redundant well field source and has spent the last couple of years and quite a bit of money identifying and permitting this particular site. We're at the conclusion of the finish line of permitting and about ready to go out to bid, which caused the engineers from environmental partners to finalize, update the budget, recheck all their numbers, get an outside opinion of cost. And in doing so, they identified approximately, what they felt at the time was about a $350,000 shortfall in our ability to issue the base bid and a couple, two alternates and have a contingency for the project in case something came up. So Barry and I have been working with them on this for the last few weeks. We identified for them our very strong concern that that was a number that was just not going to be acceptable to the town, that we needed to find a way to reduce it and to understand why we were, are at this point, since the town has budgeted, has approved almost $2.9 million for the project up till now. So joining us at the meeting tonight are Ryan Alroth and Anne Marie Patrica, the engineers who work on our project for us. And they're prepared to go into as much detail as you like, but to give you, you know, the 30,000-foot level, this project, when it was brought forward to the town in 2018, was an assumption made that permitting and the ability to get to construction would happen in, you know, under a year. And so they built into the project, you know, a contingency and the costs at that time. But they didn't budget for any escalation because they figured it would move ahead fairly quickly. That was a reasonable assumption, but in fact, permitting has taken over two years and costs have changed. And so we asked them to put together the first memo in your packet, which helps explain, you know, what has happened and what we've done about it. We have looked hard at the numbers. We've scaled some things back where we can. And really where we're at now is the $173,000 that we are, would like, we would need to put into the warrant article for the water budget town meeting is to provide a construction contingency so that if there's some unforeseen condition or perhaps an item not specific on the drawings, that we have the money available to be able to address it. And the goal being that we don't spend, you know, any of it, that we fund it from retained earnings that we have on hand, and we never spend it, and we put it back. And I would also point out that we also asked them, because I think, you know, for me- And I would also point out that we also asked them, because I think, you know, for me, it was important to understand the history of this project of what we spent for the last five years, almost one and a half million dollars to get to this point. And there's been suggestions that, you know, we should just hook up to another community or buy water from one we have an interconnection with. And so we asked them to help us, you know, understand what those costs could look like so we can make this decision. And what I learned through all that is those, an interconnection with another community that we don't have yet would be in a neighborhood of two and a half to three and a half million. And the price of water with the community we do have an agreement with would be far exceed what we can produce on our own. So that's the 30,000 foot level. And I don't know if you'd like to have an overview by either Ryan or Anne Marie, or you'd like to get into questions?
I think from my perspective, I would appreciate intro from either Ryan or Anne Marie. Thank you both for joining and I'll let you decide between the two of you who would like to give us a little bit of an intro here.
Sure, I can, I can start. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, so as Blythe said, I'm, my name's Ryan Algrove. I'm the project manager on the, on this project for the last three years. I'll let Anne Marie introduce herself, but she's the hydrogeologist, so she's done most of the work, finding the site and permitting the well and dealing with DEP to this point. My role has been the design and permitting of the pump station itself and the treatment and the water mains and all the kind of nuts and bolts of the project. And I know, I think Blythe did a good job explaining kind of how we got to where we are. The project was budgeted back in 2018, kind of before we even started preliminary design. There was, you know, obviously we had to make an assumption, some assumptions at that point about where the design was headed. And we, you know, had contingency that we thought would get us to the finish line. We didn't anticipate that the project would get, take as long as it did to permit. We, we had a lot of back and forth with the Charles River watershed. I'm sure you've heard some of that. And, you know, we're now at the point where we've gotten through all those regulatory hurdles. We're waiting for our last permit on the construction of the pump station. We've gotten comments back from DEP on the, on our design and they're pretty minor. So, you know, we're basically ready to go out to bid if, you know, in the next few weeks, we, we could put this thing out to bid. And like Blythe said, I was, you know, we, we double checked our numbers. I had a third, third party doing a cost opinion and, you know, the, it wasn't at the place where I was comfortable putting it out to bid. You know, you don't obviously want to put a job out if you don't think you're going to have any contingency going into construction because construction, obviously things can come up. And so that's, I brought to the attention of Barry and Blythe. And we've been working the last few weeks trying to clarify, you know, everything that's gotten us to this point. And we were, we wrote those memos and we, we did a value engineering process and we, I think we, we cut as much out of the design that makes sense. Obviously it's a long-term investment. This is a well field that the town's going to rely on for, you know, 50 years. So, you know, we want to make sure that the town can utilize it to its full capacity for that amount of time. I guess Anne Marie, I don't, you know, have any, if you have anything to add to that?
A couple of things that I would add to what you've said. The town is in, in need of a redundant well field. If the Gold Street well field should go down, they don't have a lot of resources except to rely on interconnections. So it's been a long process to permit this redundant well field and we've had a lot of DEP support throughout the process. DEP has been in agreement that the town really could use another well field. And there've been a lot of hurdles with dealing with Charles River watershed and getting the well field. And that's one of the reasons it's taken two years longer. But I think the benefits of the well field, the town is in need of it. And, you know, going forward, we should make sure we have the budget to finish developing in the construction.
Kevin, you're muted.
I am muted. Thank you both very much. Appreciate the high-level overview and the insight. At this point, I'll toss it over to the board for any questions they may have, starting with Cece.
I may have some, no, but right now I think I understand what's going on.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just, to the both of you, I just, are you both comfortable with the design spec? I mean, the biggest problem here, obviously, the biggest here was with the, the $173,000 is, is are we, are we confident with your design specs? Have you reviewed them? I mean, as you know, we have a history in town of having large overruns for things that were missed. And we can't afford to have a large overrun for something we've missed. So have you guys double, triple check, not your costs, but your design spec to make sure this thing can be built as it's been designed for the value so that we avoid hopefully having to spend this additional $173,000?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Now, Environmental Partners has a pretty rigorous quality control program. You know, we have usually a senior engineer in our firm who has nothing to do with the project, do a, you know, head-to-toe evaluation of the design, the specs, the cost estimate so that we're getting an outside perspective on, you know, obviously as a project manager, we can get too close to a project and maybe you can miss something or anything like that. But, you know, we, we do have pretty rigorous quality management procedures that we go through before a job goes out to bid. And, you know, the other thing to remember is that DEP is reviewing these and, you know, they've asked us, you know, a list of 25 or 30 questions about our design. So as far as a regulatory perspective, you know, I'm confident that we didn't miss anything that DEP is going to come and do the inspection at the end of the job and say, well, you know, how come you don't have this analyzer, you know, some specific requirement? You know, they've, they've gone through these plans with a fine-tooth comb and, you know, asked us some very specific questions that we've responded to. And I think, you know, at this point, the design is, is raved to go to bid and I don't expect any major overruns or not, I don't expect any major changes to the design and construction. The only thing for a project with excavation is that there could be, you know, some soil in the ground that needs to be disposed of in a special way, you know, organics in the soil, or you could run into some ledge. You know, that's really the biggest risk on this project, I think, because we are putting in, I want to say 1,800 feet of pipe. So there's always that risk. You can't do a boring in every single location you're putting pipe. But, you know, I, I see that as really the only significant construction cost risk at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Chris. I think my only question was centered around the previously established contingency. I see that in your outline, you had it at around $500,000 initially and in your updated estimate, it's down to $180,000. Could you just talk to me a little bit about where that's kind of going at this point and where the 173 will pile on top of that?
Sure. I think I, I think I understand your question, but correct me if I'm wrong. So, yeah, I mean, we had a much larger contingency at the, at the beginning of the project design. Obviously we, there's a lot more unknowns and, you know, typically as you get closer and closer to a, you know, a final product, you would whittle down that contingency. And for a new facility like this, you know, 10% contingency is, is our, is adequate. That's usually our target. So, you know, if it was a renovation project, you know, an existing building where there's a lot more, is always unknowns in, in those types of projects, you know, we might recommend 20% or something like that. But where this is a, a site with nothing on it, the amount of unknowns is relatively limited to what's underground, which is, you know, soil conditions. So we're, you know, 10% is typical for this type of project. I hope, I hope that answered your question.
It did. So I guess I didn't articulate it as well as I could, but I was more getting to the fact that it was meant, this 173,000 you're asking for is meant to get us back up to a comfortable 10% number within contingency as opposed to being defined as something that's required to move forward with any step of the project at this point.
Correct, yeah. The additional requested funds is basically, I think with the funding that exists now, we have like, you know, 1% contingency, something very minimal. So this would get us up to 10%.
Got it. Thank you.
Blythe, anything you'd like to add?
Just that I want to give a shout out to both Barry and Al Finney, who also jumped in and, and looked through everything and came up with some good ideas to reduce this to a more, I would say, palatable. I mean, none of us are happy about this, but I think they were great helping us figure this out. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Barry. Chris, anything else you'd like to add before we move on?
Nope.
Cece, anything from your perspective?
No.
All right. Once again, Ryan and Marie, thank you so much for joining us and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item this evening is to please discuss a draft of the annual town meeting warrant. Blythe, please take us through the entry.
So on the hopeful thought that we would have town meeting on June 9th, we put this back on the agenda just to touch base with the board since it's been a while about where we are in the warrant. So I'm not going to go through everything. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. What we include in your packet is the marked up version from town council. The, the preamble is obviously changed to account for the fact that the election as it stands today would be after town meeting, which is different for us. Jumping down to articles six and seven, these are the water and wastewater enterprise fund budgets. I have recommended that we use the DOR's preferred language for these, which is different from what Norfolk's done in the past. And my reason for that is in the past, the way they were written, you, people had to wait to get to town meeting to know what the components of these budgets were and the revenue source for the PowerPoint and the slide. This provides that information upfront, which I think is a little bit more helpful to folks who want to understand what they're going to be voting on. And on the water article, I have been added the $173,000 for the project we just talked about. Jumping down to number 10, this is an article that is new this year. It's a proposal by the school committee to accept and establish a special education reserve fund specifically for the Norfolk schools. And what would happen is the, the plan for this would be for the school to transfer part of remaining funds that are left in their FY20 budget into this fund, approximately $100,000. So that when and if there is a out-of-district student for which they need to pay tuition for in FY21 or later, these funds would be set aside for only that purpose, voted on by both the school committee and the select board. Both would have to vote favorably to spend the money. As Dr. Lardy, I think, has mentioned in previous meetings, the school committee's budget for FY21 presently does not include this money for a special ed out-of-district placement. This would, this would take the place of that by taking money not spent this year and rather than turning it back to free cash, it would go into this dedicated fund. So that's just an overview of what that is. Jumping to Article 12, this is a, this was proposed by the town government study committee to make all the town meeting warrants required to be mailed. There's been some conversation in the past about mailing the annual, but then a decision made a couple of years ago to mail a postcard for a special. This change would require that every town meeting have the warrant mailed. And you see the town council's comment that he wanted to clarify that whether we went mailed and actually delivered to the post office or delivered in people's mailboxes. And I indicated to him that the intent was to actually have delivered to the post office seven or 14 days in advance. Article 13 is some puts and takes with removing a revolving fund for snow removal that the DOR says we can't, we're not allowed to have anymore. To add a revolving fund for, the Board of Health has requested for tobacco control compliance inspections. And so those are the changes. Otherwise, there are no changes to the thresholds of funding that are planned for any of these revolving funds. And then per the planning board's vote last week, we would strike Articles 21 through 27. Those were all associated with possible changes in zoning for Southwood Hospital and they have withdrawn all of those. And then the last two articles, 28 and 29, would become 21 and 22. Since this was last put together, the CPC has met and the Affordable Housing Trust have met and they are working on possibly bringing forth an article to take advantage of a change in CPC with regard to the pandemic to allow some affordable housing funds within CPC to be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust and spent on, on rental program assistance. I think the upper limit of that would be $50,000 if they go ahead. I have indicated to both of them that I would mention it to you tonight. They would continue to do more work on to determine whether they want to bring it forward. And if they do, we would ask at an upcoming meeting to have the board open the warrant to add the article and then close it again. So those are the things I wanted to make sure I touched on and happy to answer any other questions.
No questions from my end. I'll toss it over to Chris. Any questions from your perspective?
Blythe, does it, and I don't know what the number is without looking, would it make any sense maybe also to ask the CPC maybe to put a, and I don't know if it's possible, to put a halt to the 1% that comes out of residents taxpayer, the taxpayers for this next year due to the pandemic? You know, the fact that we charge 1% for those? Maybe we put a halt on that for a year while we go through this? Is that something that might be something they'd want to explore or, and I don't know what the dollar value would be off the top of my head, but that may, that may help us as well or help the taxpayer as well as we move through this pandemic?
I was at a competing meeting last week, so I didn't have a chance to go to theirs. I have no sense about whether or not that's something they'd want to put forth or not, but I will certainly get ahold of the chair and let her know it's been brought up and see if Cece wants to, excuse me, Cindy wants to take that in front of the CPC. I know it would need to be voted on by town meeting. I don't know if that would affect, effectively end having a CPC. I haven't been through a, a closure of a program, but that's something we'd have to look into.
I know Sue's on now. She may know the answer to that. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I had to drive from one place to another. What was the question, Chris?
Oh, I was, maybe putting a temporary moratorium on the CPC funds collected through our taxes for one year while we go through this pandemic to help the taxpayers? Would we lose our status or is that, I know we reduced it once down from 3% to 1%, but if we did halt it for a year, would that, would we lose some kind of status?
I, I'm not sure. I'm actually on a webinar tomorrow for a few hours with 400 people from the Commonwealth and I'll try to get that question answered.
Thank you.
Sure.
Cece, any questions, comments on the warrant?
No.
Very good. So Blythe, I mean, we do have some upcoming conversations about the timing of town meeting and whatnot, but it, it sounds like at the very high level, we have a good understanding of what we're looking at in terms of, in terms of the slate of items. And I don't think the board necessarily. And I don't think the board necessarily needs to identify an order for the article at this point. Might be a little early for that unless you have a different opinion.
I think it all comes down to when can we, when can we and do we want to have town meeting? And I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. Right. Okay. I'll throw it over to attendees if anybody has a comment or a question on the town meeting article. If you do, please use the raise hand feature located on the participant logo on your toolbar. I am seeing none, so we'll be moving on. Our next item is to please discuss the expansion of the Metacoma Emergency Communications Center. Go ahead, Blythe.
Thank you. So in your packet is a memo that I've drafted about this change. And I'll go over it hopefully at the 30,000 foot level and then take any questions. Earlier this year, the head of the state 911 department reached out to Gary Primo, our director, to ask whether or not the MECC would be willing to entertain adding two communities, which are Mendon and Millville. And so those conversations have started and were discussed two weeks ago. Will be discussed by the MECC board again next week. But the state has had to spend an inordinate amount of money to make sure the communication systems are appropriate for the Mendon and Millville district, which they would rather direct towards regional districts. And so they've brought this up to Mendon and Millville. And those two communities are very interested in joining the MECC because like we were a couple of years ago in other small towns of their size, they run their dispatch with one person working on each shift. And that presents limitations in terms of their communications abilities. So they indicated to the state that they were interested and the state approached us as the MECC. And the board has discussed it. And we are very much, I think, in favor of this, provided that, you know, all the details are worked out. And the state is prepared to utilize the money that they receive. Every, every phone number in the state pays a, a part of their bill goes towards the support of 911. The state uses those, that money to fund grants of various kinds. And so for us, to add these two communities, the state is prepared to give us a four-year transition grant. And they would pay 100% of all four towns' cost of running the MECC for FY '21, FY '22, 50% in '23 and 25% in FY '24. And at the same time, they will cover a large portion of Mendon and Millville's costs for even longer, for 10 years. They'll also increase what's called our support grant, which goes towards offsetting costs for training and equipment and those sorts of things, which will help lower all of our communities' costs. And so it's, and the last part about this is that because we'd be adding the population of two towns and their call volume, the percentage of the budget that Norfolk pays for today, which is 16% for the agreement, would fall to 12 and a half. So in your packet is a budget spreadsheet, which shows that our, right now, our assessment for FY '21 is $380,000 and it would go to zero. So while it wasn't necessarily pertinent to the budget conversation earlier in the meeting, it, this possibly could be a portion of the overall, you know, budget solution. And so if this was to go forward, the, the intent would be that Mendon and Millville would start being dispatched from the MECC in Janu, on January 1st, 2021. And even though that's halfway through the year, the state would guarantee us 100% of our costs for the whole fiscal year, as well as what they're providing to Mendon and Millville. We do have some issues to, you know, to work through in terms of governance structure with adding two towns and whether both those towns have an equal vote. Right now, all four communities have a, an equal vote. And whether we add the combined group district that they are now, Mendon and Millville is one vote or one each per town, we have to work through. But we've tried to, to project the budget forward with, you know, assumed increases in expenses and capital costs and salary costs. And we think it's conservative. We think it's probably on, on the high end. We think that we're in a good position staffing wise to take this on. We actually added three dispatchers, one per shift this, earlier this fiscal year because the call volume for police calls in all the communities is quite high. And wanted to make sure that when we needed to, we had appropriate staff. And that's put us in a good position to be able to take on these two towns, which as we understand it, have a very low call volume. And we think that we've got the equipment in place. And that even with adding these two towns, we likely can add another town at some point in the future of a size on the, on par with, say, Norfolk or Runtham. We haven't identified any, but I think we could grow that much more in the future. After that, we might be in a position where we don't have enough physical space to add dispatch positions in the, what is the envelope of that room now without renovations to the second floor of the police station. So that's not something we're thinking about right now. As the agreement is written, the, the board of directors of the MECC are the four town administrators. So the decision would be up to the four of us. And as I see it today, I think all four communities are in agreement to move forward with this provide we resolve these, these, all these matters together. And I think that we will. And we're excited about what we think it means for all of our communities in terms of lower costs and continued excellent service. For the MECC itself, we have spent, the first year has been challenging in, from the perspective of software. Almost all the people that developed the MECC and chose the systems are not involved anymore. They've retired or moved on, except for Chief Stone and maybe one other. And the way it was, was planned, and now the people involved, the expectations are different. And we've had to work through all that. Everyone has worked hard at the police chiefs and fire chiefs have really stuck with it all. And we've, and then we all feel like we've gotten to a good place. And for me, I wanted to make sure that the expectation level of service that we wanted when we got into this and the needs of our police and fire departments were going to be what we had to have. And I feel that we have achieved that. So I don't want to talk forever. It's been a long meeting, but that's the overview. And I just wanted to touch base with all of you, see if you had any questions or concerns or things I might not be thinking about so we can continue to plan for this.
Thank you, Blythe. My only question was surrounding the addition of the two communities. I believe that the agreement takes us through 2040 for the other four towns. Would they be included for the full duration of that period or would that be extended anyway?
That is a point we haven't discussed, but I think we would all assume that we would just go, we would go forward through 2040.
Got it. Thank you. Chris, questions, comments?
Nope. I think it's a great opportunity and I hope it happens. I think it certainly would be a welcome news for our budgets for the next couple of years.
Absolutely. Thanks. Cece, questions, comments?
Nope. None from me.
If I could add one last thing I forgot to mention. The MECC has accumulated probably by the end of this fiscal year about $900,000 in retained earnings or free cash, however you want to describe it. Because when the MECC was formed and budgets planned for last year and this, there was an assumption made that we needed to pay a pension assessment to Norfolk County when in fact we found that we don't need to make it until FY '22. And so part of the discussions has been how much should we keep in reserve for unforeseen situations and costs? And how much could we then return to each of the communities for its use in other, in other ways? So that hasn't been nailed down yet, but I would say that we would receive 16% of whatever we have contributed that we don't feel we need to keep in reserve. And that may be helpful to Norfolk's budget situation as well.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to any attendees. If you have any questions or comments related to the potential expansion of the Metacoma Emergency Communications Center district, please utilize the raise hand function now and we'll call on you. I am not seeing any raised hands, so I will move on to our next agenda item. Looks like our next agenda item is to approve some warrants. Mr. Weider, you appear to be the winner this week.
Yes. Please approve the following warrants that have been signed on 4/7/2020 in the amount of $32,874.06, on 4/10/2020 in the amount of $785,290.28, on 4/14/20 in the amount of $59,791.98, and on 4/14/2020 in the amount of $332,324.71.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye. Christopher Weider?
Aye.
Cece Van Time?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. And our last item this evening is the approval of minutes. Cece, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the board approves the minutes of the March 15th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry, was it 15th or 5th?
5th is what is in my.
Got it. Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye. Christopher Weider?
Aye.
Cece Van Time?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Blythe, do we have anything else for the board this evening?
Nope.
Do you see anything else from you this evening?
No.
Chris, anything from you?
Hey, safe and well, all of you, please.
Just before we go this evening, I, I just wanted to say thank you, most to everybody on the board, Blythe, a lot of the staff at Town Hall, even some of the residents that are on the call today. My family experienced a loss as a result of the COVID-19 crisis 11 days ago. And the overwhelming support and reaching out and notes and sympathy and everything that we received. My family really appreciated it. Thank you all very much for that. With that, I would move that we adjourn for the evening. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, roll call votes. Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Carolyn Van Time? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
You too.